Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to a meeting of the Greenwich Town of Greenwich Planning and Zoning Commission being held virtually. Today is Tuesday, August 8th. And our absent from the meeting this afternoon is Dennis Yeskey. And Mr. Barilak will be seated for Mr. Yeskey. In addition, on the first item, the people who were seated at the previous meeting will continue to be seated. In addition to Mr. Barilak, on the first item, it would be Albin, Levy, Barilak, Jenkins, and Wells. If Mr. Barilak is unable to join us, it will be Albin, Levy, Jenkins, and Wells, and there will be four people seated, Mr. Slane.
Understood.
I don't know if anybody's had a chance to read the minutes, so in the meantime, we're waiting for Mr. Levy to come in. He's in now.
And Mr. Barilak, right, Madam Chair?
Okay.
Um, I'm going to try Mr. Barilak one more time before we start the item, Mr.
I'll email him the link as well.
One, two, three, four.
Are you counting seated people, Mr. Levy?
Yeah, so there's four here.
There's four of us, and we can do four. We can do four, but I'm just still trying to confirm because the last I spoke with Bob, he was on his way.
Okay.
But he's not in here, and it's already 4:08.
Is it useful or possible for me to sit in?
Not if you haven't read the transcript from the last meeting. I believe you haven't, right? Because we weren't expecting you to see. We'll just do the four. Good afternoon, everybody. Our first item on the agenda is 163 Field Point Properties LLC. For a final subdivision, 163 Field Point Road and Zero Woodland Drive. This is a transfer of 1,364 square feet of land from one property to the other. And was left open at our previous meeting on August 1st to allow the applicant to address additional items. Thank you. Mr. Slane, if you would kindly proceed.
Yes, Jack Slane for the applicant. I apologize for my partner, Mr. Hegney, who is not here. And would probably do a much better job than I am, but he's in British Columbia, having a lovely time. So here I am. Yes, I understood that there are a number of items open. I think we we got you the letter that you wanted. To make the sewer department happy, indicating that we will abide by whatever they tell us to do. We've got you a new zoning location survey that shows the garage gone and has the green area chart you were requesting. And I don't know if there are any other issues other than there was an open permit on the for the CO on the existing building on 163. But I think you're aware that you can't deny the application based on a zoning violation, which isn't material to the application itself. I can cite you a couple of cases. One is planning board, City of Stanford versus Garrison versus the Board of Stanford. And that says, we stated in Federico, which is a previous case, that only zoning violations that are inherent in the plan as submitted may be a basis for denying the subdivision application. You can't reject a subdivision application on the basis of existing zoning violations. You do, however, have remedies. You know, zoning enforcement, the fire marshal, and whatever else you can muster to make sure that the applicant gets the CO that may or may not be required. I don't know if there's anything else. We're moving 1,300 feet. It doesn't appear to be when we're done, both lots will still be larger than necessary. The FAR is easily met here, and I don't know what else. Happy to answer any questions.
Madam Jenkins.
Mr. Slane, I know you're pinch hitting here, so I'm going to make some observations. I think part of the problem that I've had with this application is that it's kind of like pulling teeth to get information that I feel the commission, or at least I as a commissioner, am entitled to. I note that the map has been refiled and it's more accurate. I know that the green area calculations are being provided. But there was quite an interesting workaround from my point of view about the lack of FAR information. Now, I understand that there appears to be virtually no way that the existing structure represents an FAR violation, given the size of 163 Field Point. But this kind of information, these factual representations about property are really critical to our analysis. And we can reach we can reach conclusions, but if we don't have factual representation, sometimes we're reaching conclusions in a void, almost as though it's a hypothetical question. So I have to say that I'm still, I know that the zoning enforcement officer is satisfied with Mr. Hegney's representation, that there's no possible FAR violation. But again, this, there are a lot of holes in the factual information about the property. I I can't say one way or another at this point whether I feel it's sufficient to deny it. As you point out, it's a lot line revision, and there do not appear to be any violations here. But I think I'm concerned that the commission get the kind of factual representations about properties that are in the regulations and that we're entitled to. So I have some serious reservations about saying, oh, don't worry about this. Don't worry about that. It's not a violation. So I don't know what I expect you to respond to that. We're dealing with using a tax assessor's card instead of a representation by the client as to the nature of the structure in them. And in the absence of a CO, I'm kind of going, I feel like we're putting together pieces that don't fit. So I do, I have reservations about this. I have reservations about this as a precedent, particularly for other applicants saying, oh, don't worry about it. You know, we could give you this, or we could give you that, but don't worry about it. It's not a violation. So I think I've spoken enough. I've preached to the choir, Mr. Slane. But I do have some serious reservations about the lack of hard evidence on on the properties that are in front of us, even for something as relatively non-complex as a lot line revision.
Mr. Slane, would you like to comment?
Well, the only thing I will say is is your concerns, I suppose, are justified, but they're probably not justified for this application because the parameters are so beyond any possible violation. As I would probably say that with Judge Your Honor, those are good points, but those are points that you probably need to take up with the next case, which is the harder case. And that's other than that, I can, I mean, if you have, if there's any question in your mind that we're in violation, I suppose that would be the basis to deny.
No. No, Mr. Mr. Slane, the basis is what you're hearing is that you've submitted an incomplete application to us because data that is required by us has not been submitted. Now, obviously, we could make the argument, we could accept the argument made by you and your partner that there is that the FAR must be compliant by default since the lot is oversized and the present structure on it would not fill the FAR. However, the point is still well taken. It's an incomplete application. So it, we believe that the most important thing Ms. Jenkins wanted to do was to register that. Mr. Wells, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I just had a question for Mr. Slane, and thank you also for pinch hitting for Mr. Hagney. And I guess my question is.
Right before you get slammed.
Could we, could we turn around instead of saying, well, the commission can't deny because of the absence of a CO? Could we approve subject to the submission of an acceptable CO?
It's not really, the CO has nothing to do, the issue here is that the CO has, the CO in fact has nothing to do with the lot line revision. What's missing, though, is that for the lot line revision, since this lot is being reduced, we require an FAR calculation, and the applicant has not submitted the FAR calculation. And that was, that's the issue that Ms. Jenkins was raising. So the question is, could we ask the applicant to submit the FAR calculation with if this was to move forward?
Right. Thank you.
We do, of course, Mr. Slane, and we made this very clear to Mr. Hegney. We were quite concerned that you have a multi family. It's not what's before us, but that you have a multi-family building that doesn't have a CO. Because we don't know that the people are safe in that building. We know that that's not the matter before us, but we're still concerned. So I think what we're looking for, Mr. Slane, is if you would in fact give us the FAR.
I can't give it to you now, but I guess I can get it to you if that's the.
Okay, all right. So we could, if we were to move this forward, you're you're you would submit the FAR.
I will talk, who's our conveyor on this?
Yeah.
Talk to Sam, and ask them if they can send you the FAR calculation.
Okay, and then you've already sent the, and you've already sent the, we have the map without the garage on it, so that shows that. Mr. McRae.
Just a quick thought. Just a quick thought. The subdivision is predicated on actually having no, no nonconformities for the existing lot to remain. If the FAR is over, are we potentially creating an after the fact, not conformity if the FAR doesn't work?
No, because what you're doing, you know implicitly, you basically know that it's it's conforming, that the FAR must be conforming, given the size of the building that's on an oversized property. The issue for us is just that it's an incomplete application. But the deeper issue that was really bothering us is that it doesn't have a CO, and that's not relevant to this application, so we can't act on it. Okay, any other questions? Seeing no other questions from the commission, does anyone object to closing this applica-?
Public?
My, yes, I just got there. Does anybody from the public wish to speak on 163 Field Point Road? Anybody from the public, please raise your virtual hand. Okay, seeing nobody from the public, does anyone object to closing this application at this time? This is 163 Field Point Road and Zero Woodland Drive. Drive, yes. This application is therefore closed. Seated again on this application are Levy, Wells, Jenkins, and Albin. Four people are seated. As the fifth person who was seated is not attending this meeting. I would, would anybody like to offer a motion on behalf of this application?
I would, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Ms. Jenkins.
163 Field Point Properties LLC. Application PLPC 2023 00267. For a final subdivision for a proposed lot line revision between two existing parcels to transfer 1,364 square feet of land from 163 Field Point Road to Zero Woodland Drive, the subject parcels located at 163 Field Point Road and Zero Woodland Drive in the R6 zone. Whereas the applicant requested a lot line revision to transfer 1,364 square feet from 163 Field Point Road, a property consisting of 17,537 square feet to Zero Woodland Drive, a property that is currently non-conforming in size as it is composed of 6,174 square feet, where a minimum of 7,500 square feet is required in the R6 zone. The commission finds that DPW issued a memo dated 7/27/2023 stating it has no comments on the requested lot line revision. Conservation provided comments dated 7/26/2023, noting that the proposed transfer of land should not have any visible impact on the surrounding natural environment. IWWA issued a green sheet sign off dated 6/20/2023, indicating no further action is required. Sewer gave comments on 7/25/2023 requesting an acknowledgement letter. The applicant provided such letter dated 7/27/2023. A site visit confirmed that the survey map dated 6/21/2021 provided by the applicant was inaccurate. As the garage shown at Zero Woodland Drive had been demolished, the applicant provided a new map on 8/1/2023, accurately reflecting the vacancy of Zero Woodland Drive and slightly adjusting the parcel size breakdowns. The applicant provided green area calculations for 163 Field Point Road on the lot line revision map dated 8/1/2023. On 7/25/2023, the ZEO requested FAR calculations for the existing dwelling at 163 Field Point Road. The applicant provided additional information on 7/27/2023. And on 8/1/2023, the ZEO indicated that for his purposes, the information provided was sufficient. The certificate of occupancy for the dwelling at 163 Field Point Road described as a multi-family structure by the applicant cannot be located. The commission notes for the record that while it has no reason to believe the structure represents a violation of the FAR requirements, there is no discoverable current certificate of occupancy for the structure to indicate if additional space has been added or modified at any time. And the commission has no confirmation from the applicant or other official filings to confirm the factual accuracy of the dimensions indicated on the tax assessor's card. Therefore, motion to approve the proposed lot line revision noting the following. The commission finds that the proposed lot line revision does not constitute a subdivision or resubdivision as defined in Sections 2, 261, Sub 6, and Sub 15 of the Town of Greenwich subdivision regulations. The applicant shall provide the required FAR calculations, not presently before the commission. A certificate of occupancy for 163 Field Point Road shall be obtained and filed prior to the issuance of a zoning or building permit at Zero Woodland Drive. Upon filing a map of the properties with the lot line revision, the applicant shall include on such map any existing trees of 10 inches in caliber or more or such other trees as may be significant to the property in satisfaction of Section 6, 266, Sub 10 of the subdivision regulations of the Town of Greenwich. Approval of such lot line revision does not address in any respect any remaining zoning issues that might attach to the properties as so configured following the revision or their development. Finally, the applicant shall address any and all remaining staff or interdepartmental issues in connection with this application.
Do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
Mr. Wells has seconded. Mr. Wells, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Jenkins?
Aye.
Mr. Levy?
Aye.
Albin is also aye, and with that, the motion passes for nothing, and we go to the next item. Thank you very much, Mr. Slane. I hope you enjoyed our company.
Thank you very much. It was very entertaining and educational. Thank you.
Now we go to the next item. It's a discussion item, the Town of Greenwich, Old Greenwich Elementary School. This is an application for a pre-app review for work to be done at 285 Sound Beach Avenue, the Old Greenwich Elementary School in the R12 and coastal overlay zones. Presenting will be Mr. Devine has his hand up. Patrick, is he one of the presenters?
He is, yes, for the project.
David Stein, maybe?
Joseph Devine?
No.
And David Stein, yes, and Jeff Anderson also has his hand up. And for the public in attendance, we will hear the presentation. The commission will ask some questions, and then we will turn to the public for your comments, which, based on how many people raise their hands, may be limited, but we'll try to give you, if we limit it, we'll give you as much opportunity to come back and speak. Once the public has spoken, the commission will wrap up with feedback for the applicant on the pre-app and any input on a direction to take, and we will incorporate the public input into that. And now, who's the lead presenter? Mr. Waters, you're the chair of the Building Committee. Are you leading off?
I, subject to Mr. Lowe's. He may want to say.
For clarity, I think for clarity, just so everybody knows, the commission is always has one representative on building committees and school building committees. In this instance, Mr. Lowe is the representative. It's an awkward place to be because he cannot vote on the application when it comes before us, and he's also a non-voting member of the Building Committee. But I know he's been working hard to be helpful to the Building Committee. Mr. Lowe, did you wish to say anything, or do you want to?
I'm just acknowledging my status as a fly on the wall. And I'm, I'm waiting to hear from the esteemed Mr. Stein to lead the discussion, and I'm all ears.
Great, thank you very much.
I'm happy, I'm happy to introduce folks if you'd like.
Great, that would be terrific. I believe I heard you present elsewhere. Your committee began meeting when?
Yeah, so we began meeting in October of 2022.
Of 2022, and you have been meeting until now. I heard some enormous number of meetings from Mr. Lowe. And the primary issues that you set out to address, where you had building specs, Mr. Waters? You had specs from the Board of Ed?
Yes, yes, I can, I can, I will, I was planning to speak to some of that real quick, if that's okay.
Yes, please.
Okay. So members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, thanks for hosting this meeting this afternoon to discuss our pre-application. I'm James Waters, and I'm the chairman of the Old Greenwich School Building Committee. I do need to thank Mr. Lowe, who's been your representative. And I can assure you that he's been an extremely active and constructive member of our committee. I know from our building committee's perspective, we certainly thank him for that. Look, we're excited to discuss our project with you today and get your questions and feedback as we start down the path of municipal improvement for this iconic school building in our community. Today, you're going to hear from our project architect, David Stein of Silver Petrosely and Associates, and our construction manager, Jeff Anderson of Downs Construction. And I'm not sure if we may ask that our owner's representative, which is Lawrence Rosati of Morganti Group, he should also be on the line as well. So I know some of you may be familiar with SPNA from their work on the GHS Festival project, and I think you're going to see that Downs and Morganti are bringing a lot to the table here to help us get this done and to do it right, both for the town and for our kids. So real quick, just to get to your chairs' questions, we're making significant progress on making this renovation a reality. She's right that since October, we've had 57 public meetings of our building committee. You may recall that the Board of Education deemed this a top priority project in the 2018 Facilities Master Plan. The OGS education specifications were created in 2020 to 2021, and then unanimously approved by the Board of Ed in October 2021. The Building Committee was formed in October 2022, and we hired our project team, the folks you see on this call in the first half of this year, and completed the schematic design in June. That was included with our submission. Before the end of this year, we expect to complete the design development process and then move into construction documents. After that, we're going to be ready to go out to bid, assuming we've reached municipal improvement status and the town provides construction funding for the project. So look, today, I would just, I'm, I'll turn it over to David, but I think you're going to hear that our team has been working really hard. They're talking to folks across town government, DPW, the Fire Department, the Parks Department, the Sewer Division. They're meeting with the tree warden next week. We've conducted extensive diligence on this building, and we'll continue to do that in the coming months. And finally, you know, I just want to highlight for you that it's been really important for the Building Committee that, you know, we talk to stakeholders regularly to include parents, students, teachers, neighbors. We've gotten a lot of great feedback from them and have incorporated it. I will tell you that most of it is very positive, encouraging us to move forward. People want to see this project done. So with that, I'll turn it over to David Stein, who'll walk you through our application, and of course, we look forward to your questions and your feedback.
Thank you, Mr. Waters. Mr. Stein, go ahead.
Yeah, good afternoon, everybody. Again, David Stein, principal with Silver Petrosely and Associates. If I could have permission to share my screen, currently disabled, that would be great.
You're all set.
Thank you very, thank you very much. So let me queue that up and just give me a second to move a few things around on my end so I could see who I'm talking to. Excellent. So good afternoon, everybody. So we have a slide deck here that we want to present, starting with, starting with the next slide, which begins to start with the mission statement, and and I'll just quickly read through it because I think it's important as it hits some real key points to the overall mission of this project. So the Old Greenwich Building, School Building Committee is committed to preserving the character of the Old Greenwich School, which is over 100 years old in its original form, and ensuring a timely, cost-effective completion of the necessary renovations. While this is not a new construction or a complete full renovation, the project will address, and I'll talk about this in a bit, critical issues of security, health, safety, accessibility, and programming to meet the baseline requirements of the current and future generations. With the campus in a prominent location, we aim to ensure the Old Greenwich School plays a vital role in the broader community for decades to come. With that, I've developed bullet points with sort of highlight that mission statement, starting with providing a universal barrier-free improvements, which is ADA compliance, full ADA compliance to the building and the site, and we'll talk about that as we move through some of the, some of the floor plans. That is really mission number one, is to address the ADA issues and some of the violations that have been identified previously, prior to our team was brought on board. We are creating by doing that, we are, we are creating a well-defined and dignified primary entry to the building for all. The previous schemes that were developed as part of an educational spec that some may see actually had two entryways to the building, one which was for accessible entry, one which was sort of keeping the existing stair entryway in place, which was actually a modification that was built back in the 1990s. So what we are doing is we're creating a primary, single-point-of-entryway. Similar, as Mr. Waters mentioned, we are the architect of record for the high school. So moving on that same premise of creating a single, primary, secure entryway to meet the state security guidelines for, for K through 12 schools. We are also creating a four-classroom addition to the rear end or the back end. We are also, uh, creating a four classroom addition to, uh, the rear end or the back end of the building. Um, to accommodate the enrollment projections that are looking out on an eight-year projection that the, uh, Board of Educational. Has taken place. The life safety improvements to the buildings include building and fire code improvements, primarily items related to fire sprinkler. The building is not a fully sprinkler building. It will be a fully sprinkler building. We will also address other, um, means of egress components within the building, which does tie into the site plan. Uh, approval and which is relevant to our discussions today. We will also be improving the energy efficiency within the building by upgrading. The, the heating system, but also adding air quality and ventilation systems, which, um, currently are. You know, are either outdated or simply just don't exist throughout the building. Those are relevant still to a site plan piece because we are planning to do all that work within the envelope and not have an aesthetic. Um, uh, envelope to that. In terms of our site and our landscape piece, and we do have our experts here, which I'm not sure we did a full intro of the team. So, once I get past these, I'll reintroduce our team because I realized I didn't start with an introduction of our team that is here. But, um, we start with site drainage, um, this, this, um, building as we know, situates within the FEMA AE zone. And, um, and our civil engineer could talk more about or answer those questions. But we recognize that we are going to need to improve the site drainage around the building. As a result of just the modification of addition, but also to resolve any drainage issues that are currently there. So we will be proposing an engineered subsurface infiltration system that will deal with the peak volumes that are there. The FEMA AE zone, um, will then result in us that addition being one foot above, above that floodplain. Uh, floodplain, um, being identified, we have done our due diligence that have identified that floodplain lands at elevation thirteen. In which our new addition will be situated at elevation fourteen. We are addressing some issues with the current sanitary sewers at times when there are, when there are peak flows. We, there is backup within the building. We are resolving that with a replacement of one lateral. And possibly another lateral. We're working now with town engineering and last week there was cammering that was done. And we'll get that discovery information within the next week to determine. The best course of action for that. So we're still working through the engineering of the best course of action to deal with that. Which also may mean a replacement of some of those backwater devices or improving on those backwater devices. So the, um, so the school district can better maintain that. We do have our landscape architect here. We'll get into more of the details related to that in our meeting that is forthcoming with the tree warden. Um, but our intent is to do a net add of trees. We are going to be removing some trees, but our, our intent is to have a net add of, of new trees. Um, within there. Terms of the traffic and the pedestrian connections, our intent is to remain the same. We are not altering the parking, um, or any of the vehicular circulation on our parcel in any way. This school is primarily a pedestrian or student walking school. And the intent is for that to remain in that same function. So our alterations are not addressing or not changing any of those patterns. That are coming in either by vehicle or by, um, or by staff or by students that are coming into that primary entryway. We do have a few slides that I'll walk you through and let me, I guess, let me pause here to make the introduction to our team. Um, uh, in the background, I have from, from Silver Petroselli. Uh, Dean Petroselli, our senior project, uh, principal and project architect. Paul Jorgensen, I believe, is also in the wings, not elevated as a presenter unless needed. We have Joe, uh, Joe Devine, who is our civil engineer with Lang and Engineering. And we also have Kristen Minchell, who is our landscape architect, um, as part of the partnering team. Our construction manager, Jeff Anderson's here from Downs, Downs Construction. Lawrence Rosati from Morganti is the owner's rep. Um, so with that matter and chairman, I will move through the next few slides and then. I think turn it over for questions and answers. I do have some other more detailed plans set aside if we need to do that. I will just turn off my screen and reshare as needed, um, because I do have supporting material. Great. So, um, let's just start with the aerial photo, uh, and I do have a Google Earth. Um, set aside if we need to kind of zoom around and give everybody just a better perspective of what we are. Um, so as I mentioned, the original, um, the original ed specs contemplated an entryway that would be located just within this area, which I think you can see. Um, which is, oop, let me go back, my apologies. Which is sort of located just to the right entry. The main entryway that you see with the, um. With you see with the mortarboard cap, uh, and the large stairs that I showed in the front piece was, it was intended to be. A primary entryway as it exists today, but it's not an accessible entryway. So our team looked at this in a different way and said, we could resolve this by modifying the plaza. The plaza is a significant architectural element to this building as it is a gathering space. It's used for educational programming. At times there could be book fairs or so forth. And our thought is to sort of remove, um, that existing stair that was added in the nineteen nineties. Which frankly is a bit oversized and is not, was not a replica of the original design. And to enter in at this lower level. We're entering in at a lower level at elevation fourteen, so we are resolving the primary entryway at this. Entry and the addition, and we're doing that by some internal ramps that are, we're sort of working out to make that entry point. Entry point work. Um, the addition is located to the back of the building and now creating a connection to that. We are extremely sensitive to our neighbors that are located to, to the left of the screen. A- as Mr. Waters mentioned, we have met with the neighbors, um, a few times and have presented our progress as we've gone along. And the addition is a one-story for, as I mentioned, for classroom, classroom addition. The scale of that is appropriate to the neighborhood, um, and the architecture is, um, is simplistic. And blends in with the existing architecture, uh, of the building. I just want to point out too, that this building has been modified or renovated in some capacity since its original inception. About thirteen times is from what we could at least document overall. So there has been physical additions and there has been some mo- modernization on the inside of the building. The one thing on the inside of the building that doesn't, that lacks is a, is an elevator to make those connection to all those levels. So as we are talking about ADA improvements around the building and access to that front entryway. We are also addressing ADA complacency within inside that building. So our next plan here, our sort of simplified colored site plan begins to articulate our plan of creating a primary entryway. Right at the front center of the original portion of the building. We do have some renderings to show you and we still haven't fully validated the design piece. It's really still a schematic design work and flow, but we're getting real close, I think, to coming to a final conclusion for the design. And we'll show you that. But from overall concept, we are reworking this entire front plaza. What we're going to do is at that elevation fourteen, we now have the ability to sort of, of, to sheet flow. That area to a curtain drain around that overall or a trench drain around that sort of semi-circle. So we're moving the water away from the building. We're currently, it actually slopes in some regard closer to the building. So we're going to be redoing that plaza and this is going to be an at-grade entryway. The four classroom addition that you see located in the gray now creates a corridor network. Um, that, that loops the building together and creates a much more consolidated building form. We are then enhancing and creating an internal courtyard, which allows for educational spaces within this area. So from a security perspective, we have outdoor space, but it is now surrounded and secure by a building footprint. Um, and that's an important element to address. We will be manipulating and moving some of the play areas because some of that does overlay where we currently have our addition. And there is some trees and actually one lar- fairly, um, large tree that we will be working with the tree warden that we will need to remove and we will need to replace. Um, so this illustration that I have here in terms of the landscaping begins to show. The trees that are sort of located in the X that we feel are going to need to be removed. Obviously, this one sits within the addition. And then just the ADA improvements of walkways that we have within that courtyard. We also do need to address. And then we have some others. Um, I will have Kristen, uh, speak to any of the questions specifically related to. Related to the landscaping as she'd be able to kind of walk you through that through your, through your questions. I have two, we have two renderings that we want to show labeled as option A and option B. None of these are necessarily in any primary or preferred order. I really just labeled, you know, this one. Primary A or option A. And what you see here is we are reworking the topography to remove that existing, that monumental stair. And creating an entryway that's located here. This glazing and this window system will be a fortified, uh, ballistic rated glazing system. Um, but it's going to be transparent and it'll now allow for light and good visibility. Inward out to the plaza. We're creating a seating wall, which enhances the overall gathering space currently there. That sort of lacks some of that. Um, and we are now going to be able to address better drainage around that curtain drain. That would be sort of inward of that semi-circle, of those two semi-circles that you see that are addressed in the rendering. Um, and just some other views from different perspectives. We're also contemplating another option, which is actually to create a cover in a more defined, um, a more defined entry point. So we are sort of debating, um, the merits of each one of these. They essentially, from a functional or an ADA perspective, solve that. It really is looking at the aesthetic component and what is the right fit. Um, to, to meet the overall look of, of the building and tie and honor that original architecture. Um, but enhancing and defining the entryway of that building. So we're trying to look at the best balance of, as I mentioned, the dignified entryway. Which the, honestly, the previous solutions didn't necessarily, didn't necessarily address. Um, and then we, um, just some other perspectives of that. We're still looking at balancing the right landscaping, the right vegetation, the right trees. These are rendering, so they don't necessarily represent the exact vegetations that's there. As this is a work in progress, but we will get to a final solution, obviously, when we come back as we move through our design development stage. I'm not going to necessarily get into the floor plans, but just gave you a sense of some of the, what we have here. And the color is where the addition is located and what you see in this sort of reddish color is just some of the renovations. We're not doing a full enhanced renovator's new project. We are, we are hitting things in a tactful, uh, manner, addressing some programmatic elements. But also addressing the ADA piece of the project. And this is just a quick zoom in because I think it is important to the site plan to demonstrate. That we will be at elevation fourteen at this door as we enter into this secure entryway. So similar to the Greenwich High School project where you have a primary entry that is secure here. And inward, you will, um, then what happens is we need to ramp down to a lower level. There's actually the lowest level is down at twelve foot six. So we have a series of ramps that are going to get us down to that basement or lowest level that's there. We are doing improvements through the second and third level. Um, probably the most aggressive piece is just inserting an elevator on the inside of the building. It is not intended to be a projected exterior, exterior piece. Um, so with that, to some, you know, to sum up what we are, uh, attempting to achieve from the overall mission. Again, is a, is to improve the site drainage on the site to create a new addition that is elevated above that FEMA floodplain elevation. To be sensitive to the neighbors and its sort of perim- its proximity to that property line. Um, to improve the overall life safety and accessibility, either inward or outward. And to improve the building and code, com- fire code compliance piece of it. And lastly, to be sensitive to the pedestrian traffic and so forth. Um, and then, um, I, I'm sure Jeff Anderson with Downs is going to be able to talk a bit about. Just during construction and the logistics of how we actually execute and build this building. So we could either turn it over to Jeff or man, chairman, uh. Just, uh, answer any questions on your end at this point. So.
Mr. Mr. Stein, what is the BFV there?
Excuse me?
The, the base flood elevation at the site?
Base flood elevation is thirteen.
So we're at twelve-six in the basement of the existing building?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, that is correct.
And, but the elevation of the addition?
Is for, was, we're proposing to be fourteen and we're proposing the, the base elevation at that front entry door. Because we're modifying that existing stair to be at elevation fourteen.
And you will be waterproofing the basement of the existing?
We are not, we are, uh, we are not adj- we are not modifying waterproof in the exterior skin of, of the building. That's, that has not been part of our mission. This is a nine, you know, this is a hundred-year-old. Envelope that, you know, be extremely difficult historically to, to waterproof.
Got it. Okay.
Um, I could stop sharing or leave up, uh, leave up an image if that's best, um. Take your direction on how you'd like to present.
Mr. Stein, I do have a, a question. Um, the. Um, the lower level entry, the one at, uh, twelve point eight-three, is that the actual basement or is there an actual basement below that?
There, um, so the, the, the plan that you have in front of you right now, this is the lowest level. There is no basement below this.
Okay, and the elevator is intended to actually reach all levels?
That is correct.
Okay. Um, in the plan that's in front of us, uh, you have a secure vestibule?
Yes.
Um, I would assume actually you can actually see into the secure vestibule from the main office.
Yeah, so, um, uh, to what, what we're showing, and I'm not sure if you're able to see my, um, if you're able to see my cursor or not.
Yes, I can see it.
Okay, so yes, this is, this is all intended to be all-new glazing. And this glazing will be a ballistic rated glazing. So, uh, the office does have direct connection with the visitor. A visitor would be buzzed in from the outside, so there'd be some, um, a phone or call device on the outside. They'd be brought in, they would then check in to the main office and then will be allowed to be buzzed in and enter into the school.
Okay, so once they're actually in, you know, on the secure vestibule. Uh, there's no interlock to the waiting room. They're just actually in the building. That's it.
Yeah, they are then, they are then, yes, they are then i- in the building, um, and they're able to be at, um. They're able to be escorted to where they need to go. So the staff would, the staff would buzz them in and they would come get them once they were, you know, past their credentials.
Okay.
And that is similar to the, um, that is similar to the, um, the high school project in, in that.
Right, I thought the Newton standards had changed, so, uh. Once you're into the secure, you get buzzed in, but the, it's buzzed into a waiting room. That way, uh, the staff who's in their main office, et cetera, isn't running around trying to chase somebody in the room, in the building. That's already in, uh, but I may be wrong on that. It would seem. Having the, the vestibule lobby, the whole thing, being the secure area and a door into the waiting room from that point.
Something to consider in terms of a second level of, uh, of, of attempt to have another set of doors here. I think that could be.
Yes, yes, and a door into the waiting room. That way. Whoever, whoever comes to the door stays in the door.
Yeah, u- understood. We'll have to work through some of this because we have a variety of ramps, but I. We, hmm, hmm, note taken, yes.
Right, and the front plaza, um, the walls, all of that is actually a reconfiguration because the front plaza's. Elevation is, um.
Wait.
Is that my, uh, is that my daughter giving a, uh, a thumbs up right there? Um. Let's see, I lost that for a second. I'll have it up in a minute. Here we go.
Here we go.
Okay, that's that's good. Yeah, so the front plaza elevation as it exists is uh, at um is higher or lower and the wall, the the walls, the elevation they're changing to meet the new fourteen?
That 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 is correct. We are, we are fully regrading this this plaza. We will be bringing in new pavers. We will be creating a drainage system to um, to accommodate that. These seat walls are all new, so we're reconfiguring all of those grades and we're also pitching away from that front door to get to a perimeter, a perimeter drain that will then discharge to to the street.
Okay, um what is, what, how uh, how far down do you have to go? The grading has changed how much? I'm sorry.
I I think the question related to the different grades, Joe, do you want to answer that? I could also pull up our site plan to um you know, to give a to g- give a grading criteria of existing to um, to propose, but maybe you can just that.
Yeah, if you could pull up the uh the grading plan, it'd be easiest to talk to.
I can, I have that in the think you're able to see that at this point, correct?
Um, there you go.
Great, so um, I will, I will zoom in for everybody. Um
Yeah.
How's that?
Yeah, so it's a little bit complicated at at the entrance, but there is actually a low point underneath that staircase. And there's a drain there. That's kind of problematic, but we take the staircase away and we started elevation fourteen. Which is where we want to be at with the doorway and we can grade at two percent towards the street. So we could sheet flow away from that front door. The grades out there are not too far off. You can see that fourteen four.
I think it would, I think you know what I think would help. Would you mind? I'm gonna bump you for a second. And I'm just gonna show all right, everybody got that? That's
This is a good thing to show, so.
So that's the existing school front now.
What is the deficiency of, what is the deficiency that you're trying to make up to?
The ADA, it's the ADA access.
Yeah, but what is the deficiency? Is it, is it three feet? Is it two feet?
No, it's this entire stair thing.
Well, no, the entire stairs is going away. So we're we're now going into this lower um, uh, this, the the floor below.
Here, right.
Down here. So what is that deficiency that you're trying to make up to get into that floor?
Efficiency.
In other words, in other words, why, yeah, what you're changing the grade by a foot in order for it to, so you're sloping it up to the new entrance. And that grade change from where my cursor is right now to the entrance is gonna be about a foot.
It's only a foot. That's, that's very good.
If you took the staircase away, we're a foot, foot point four feet off. Then we gotta shade down so that we land at fourteen.
So that's very doable, in other words.
Very doable, not very disruptive to the whole plaza itself, the lay of the land, if you will. And most importantly, we're getting two percent slope away from the face of the building. So we don't have the stairwell. Um, we don't have that area below the stairs where the drain is. Uh, we can go right from elevation fourteen and start sloping towards the street. And really not have a huge difference in the grading. So the feel of the front of the school will be largely the same, except there won't be the staircase there.
The bottom of that stair is fourteen, is currently at fourteen point four. So just
This is fourteen point four. And what's the grade out here?
And then the grade, Joe, at the street. I'm looking at sort of a curb line elevation.
Like thirteen at the sidewalk, you know?
Yeah.
Um, right, okay.
So we're not gonna try and green through all those beautiful trees. You know, we will add some yard drains, but trying to sheet flow the plaza towards the trees.
Okay.
Did I completely disrupt Nick's questioning? No, I think, I think I answered it. It's um the elevation at the building is about fifteen. Uh, the new sill is about fourteen. It slopes down into twelve inside the building. But uh, as just stated by me, I think it was Mister Stein, it's actually, it slopes from the building back towards the street back to twelve. So the war is going one way. There's a ramp in the building going the other way. So that kind of makes, now, now it kind of figures uh, what I was seeing here. Um, there are grades that are being met that are existing and grades that are being adjusted to do that. So um, I think my questions for that have been answered. Thank you very much.
All right, I'm gonna bump myself. Okay, now we go to, um, if you wanna share again, Mister Stein, I'm sorry, I just had to bump you for that. Um, Ms. Jenkins is the next person with a question.
Um, yes, if we could go back to the floor plan with the vestibule, please.
Um, yes, I can. Let's just give me a second. I will.
And just while, okay, go ahead and then we'll ask.
Yeah, um, to the the wall to the right of that secure vestib- vestibule, is that also glass?
Yes, that is correct.
And what is the room on the other side of that glass?
Uh, that's also administrative spaces.
Okay.
Yes.
So it basically you've got eyes on both sides, the vestibule then?
That is correct.
Okay, and that's ballistic? I hate to ask that.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, okay, Mister Mister Wells.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of questions on uh HVAC and also flooding. First HVAC, uh, trying to understand, it sounds like you're gonna have heating and cooling, heat pumps, uh, you know conditioning the air in in the classrooms. You're also gonna have a boiler. Is that sort of like on a peak uh, ability? And I'm saying not for hot water, but just for heating. So if it gets super cold and your heat pumps aren't operating, is the is your your boiler, your gas boiler to uh, you know, provide sufficient heating? It in a, you know, super cold environment?
Yeah, the intent is that for for all of this to run in a in a hybrid environment, especially on these shoulder seasons, which we often have during the educational programming where it could be fairly cold at night and before we know it, where, you know, we need air conditioning. So the balance of having the system or a hybrid system that can can do both, but also could address the extremes, as you mentioned, is the intent here. We are not doing sort of a full renovation of every component of the building. Um, so we're trying to create a supplemental system um, that is um, less demand on direct fossil fuels. Hence the, hence the implementation of a of a heat pump design.
But as I understand it, one of the the drivers, just coming back to the drivers of the work you're doing. One of the drivers is to get ventilation into the school because there was not adequate ventilation, correct?
That that is
That's a top priority.
That it, that is correct. Um, and obviously, just dovetailed with with air conditioning really improves the overall air quality of the space. It addresses humidity issues and so forth, but ventilation is a key piece to that. We'll be di- we'll be having a dedicated outdoor air unit that will then filtrate in outside air and temper that accordingly.
Now, your your second priority in addressing this and um uh, Mister Lowe, please, please step in and correct me. Um, if there were other priorities or Mister Waters. Uh, you, another priority is this, what we've amply covered now is how you're addressing the ADA access to the building. Now, within the building, you are uh, putting the elevator in. And you're going to have an an overrun to the roof. How is that going to, so the elevator is going into the addition, correct?
Well, the other, the the addition is, the addition is a grade level addition that will just need to be accessed. It's a one story built addition. So the access will be essentially at gr- at grade level and have access um, through through a series of subtle internal ramps. Um, the elevator will navigate through the three floors, but the overrun will be within the roof structure above within the original pitched roof. There's no need to overrun and project through that existing, through that existing roof structure.
And and that gives, I'm sorry, sir.
Um, as a result of the ADA improvements beyond the elevator, we will be making enhancements to access to restrooms. We'll be making access to classrooms, casework, um, handrails, guardrails, those ancillary pieces that are just as important as the elevator itself. And access into each of the classrooms that have the width and depth of maneuverability to each of those spaces.
Okay, and this, this, the location of this elevator. Uh, and and maybe you have a floor plan that shows
I do, I
Yeah, there. So, okay, so
It's located just
There it is.
Yes, and it's intended to be is centrally located.
Okay.
Can within the building and we found the place that without disrupting existing bathrooms and a lot of in- infrastructure, this was the most efficient and effective location to place the elevator that would hit each level.
And that gets you access to all the classrooms?
That 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 is correct. So just to give everybody, as I walk through this plan, I'm gonna start at that first level. So it's the primary at grade level. What is in blue is the addition. Which again is just an on-grade addition. The finished floor at this location is elevation fourteen. We are getting up, because there is a ramp located here and a ramp located here that will get us from the existing floor level up to elevation fourteen for those four kindergarten classrooms.
Now, Mister Stein, if I understand, I'm just, I know I'm I'm covering ground. You've probably covered it in great depths with other people, but this is all new to us. Those um those classrooms, those kindergarten classrooms are currently all in the basement of the existing building. Those are the ones that are being relocated because of the sewer, the sewer line issues into the basement. However, you, you are resolving these sewer issues, correct? So you would no longer have a sewer backup into the into the basement level?
That that is correct. So right now, we've identified one lateral line that we will be replacing. Um, we are currently exploring whether the second lateral line um, which exits somewhere around this area that here. We just cambered that within the last week and we're deter- we will determine whether that that needs to be replaced. Um, we are also exploring backflow prevention um, within that sewage sewage line.
We've had, we've had good luck with it in in my neighborhood. Um, sir. So these kindergarten classrooms that are being relocated, they would no longer be at risk. They're being relocated for other reasons now.
They're being also relocated for program expansion, because we're now, because of enrollment projections. We are looking at just the expansion of the total size of the student population. And this allows for sort of that expansion and improvement overall to to just to the school needs. So it's a byproduct of both. We're solving one issue as we mentioned, but we're improving and providing a much more um, beneficial educational space for for the kindergarten classrooms, creating them at a more at a direct grade level, which is also an important piece. Um, so we're resolving those two issues in one.
So I'm hearing you say that there's a projected expansion in kindergarten enrollment. Does this, will the school be able to absorb with its present with the facilities that aren't being expanded? An expansion in the other grades?
Yeah, so the expansion is across the board in terms of the enrollment projection, so it's not to just directly related to kindergarten. It is based on a eight-year projection that the Board of Ed has ha- has um, has consulted uh, with a with a topographer. Uh, and that shows a, you know, an incremental increase from today to it with an eight-year projection of around four hundred and thirty-eight students total.
Now, we, I have to be very careful how I ask you this question, because it's the Board of Ed's job to decide how big. But if in the future it is necessary to further expand and to amend this footprint. Would you have, is there the capacity? What's the FAR right now? Is there the capacity to add anything else here?
I don't have that.
Okay, well, just a question for you um, that we would ask is w- we can't, we don't question whatever the Board of Ed says this is what we need. But our question would be, given this site plan, can, does it have room to, for some flexibility in the future? Uh, depending on how the needs change. Obviously, having those classrooms behind in the addition is great, because you could repurpose them if your enrollment was to decline. So that's an easy answer. You could have meeting space that could be used by the by the the community, whatever. But the other question is if there was further expansion. Uh, Mister Waters, did you want to address any of that? I believe you
Yeah, I I I I just like to to, sorry, Peter, do you wanna go?
Yeah, uh, if you don't mind, James, I uh, since you mentioned my name, uh, Madam Chair. I'd like to make a couple of comments about what you said.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so um I think it's important to acknowledge that that um, there's a comprehensive approach to resolving the ADA issues. It is not confined to a single element such as an elevator.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and uh, David uh, touched upon some of those things about adjustments in bathrooms. Uh, the the size of door openings, um, other access areas. So it's not just that. And secondly, the the need for these new kindergarten classrooms was uh, occasioned by a couple of things. One was the the sewer i- issue, but that that problem will be resolved. And uh, the other was because of the, my understanding, and David, please correct me if I'm wrong. That some of the ADA uh, compliance issues has taken up additional space, occasioning the need for uh, extra kindergarten space here. And I don't think uh, we, I think we're increasing the number of kindergarten classes, classrooms by by one. We're going to four. Uh, is that right, David?
No, it's
James, you wanna?
Yeah, yeah, let me, let me just tou- touch on a couple of things here. So um, the, a- as David said, the the um enrollment at OGS, it it's been pretty consistent, about four hundred students for the last decade. I think there's an out-year projection that it could rise a little bit, but this this project um, as commissioned by the Board of Ed, is not by about a dramatic expansion in program. Um, this is about replacing classrooms that are lost to um, addressing the ADA compliance issues. Um, this is about uh, replacing classrooms lost to have a a single secure entryway. That's how the ed specs were created originally. That's what the Building Committee's been discussing for uh, the past eight months. And um, so this is not about a a massive uh, expansion in programs. It gives the the school administration a little bit more flexibility, um, modestly. Um, but you end up with the same you know, the the kin- the the areas in red that on the screen right now. Uh, some of those are classrooms right now. So it's not, it's not really a basement per se. It's the ground floor. Right? Um, and you know, some of those, the, for example, where the the lobby is and the admin space. Those are first grade classrooms right now, right? That are that are now gonna get moved. Um, right now, where you see a science lab, right? That's a a kindergarten classroom at at the on the far right of the picture, right? So that's, those are what's getting moved into uh, or reoriented. Uh, because the kindergarten and first grade classrooms have to be on ground level. So that's, that's the need for the um, the expansion. And the other thing I would just highlight from the discussion is that um, just so uh, this group is aware, um, there is a um, ongoing complaint that has been filed uh, with the US Department Office for Civil Rights about old Greenwich Schools' lack of ADA accessibility. About two years ago, the uh, town reached a resolution agreement with the OCR, which required us to build um, you know, to renovate this building. So it is complete, is compliant with the twenty ten ADA standards. So it is compli- is compliant with the twenty-ten ADA standards. Um, we have submitted this schematic design to the OCR. They have, uh, once the Board of Ed approved it, they have the right to come back and say, um, you know, to approve it themselves. Um, so, um, all, we're, we're on track on all of that. But that, that's solving that ADA compliance issue is a key, key, key fe- feature of this, of the whole plan.
Okay, I, yeah, we just, uh, we have to, to be, we're aware of that. I was trying to ask a question related, we have to be careful to stick to the site plan that is before us. And all I'm asking you is what the flexibility is with this site plan? Should the needs be different and should the strategy change? And that was, I think I got the answer that the school can accommodate a shift in enrollment with this layout, and that's really all I needed to know.
Yeah. Now, I'm sure my last piece of data is this school, as recent as six years ago, was a, you know, before this renovation accommodated four hundred and sixty-six students.
Okay, all right. Um, let me go to Mr. Wells, who has the next question.
Yeah, I have three, uh, questions related to flooding. Thank you, Madam Chair. And the first is, uh, is the elevation of the boiler room at least a foot above base flood elevation?
Okay, so crickets on that one. That's okay. This is, uh, a pre-application. Don't worry about it. Just take under advisement. Uh, we asked you about floodproofing, and that would be something you could address, uh, whether there is a benefit to floodproofing the boiler room. You're not required to raise it. Uh, Mr. LaRoe?
Yeah, Madam Chair, so because this is a non-residential structure, there are, there are mechanical methods that can be applied to the whole building or parts of it to make it flood compliant or protected. It doesn't.
Exactly.
I think you had mentioned waterproofing or whatever.
I did. I just said that.
That's a very all-encompassing thing. There are other methods that could be used to, especially at doors and, and windows and things like that, that there's dams, for lack of a better word, that can be put up and, um, and those, you know, those areas can be protected, which I think some of the, the school does to some extent now, but I don't know if it's, um, as, um, it's not built in as much as it is as a, uh, you know, a retrofit kind of thing, so.
Okay, so my, my second flooding question is, and it has to do with the, uh, subsurface infiltration system, which I think is designed to handle the increase in runoff due to the increase in impervious service. And have you done any testing on the, on the water table to see how high it is? So that, you know, there's enough room between, uh, I guess, the, the ground and the water table to put your subsurface infiltration system in?
We will be doing that testing. Um, we met with Juan to talk about the requirements and, uh, the next step in the design would be to, to do that kind of testing, do some test bits and look at the water table and permeability of the soil so that we can properly design that system.
Okay, thanks. And then the, the last question, there may not be an answer to it, but I just want to flag it as an issue, or, or maybe you think it's not. And that is, the remaining parts of the building, the runoff is going through pipes, I believe, into the town's, uh, stormwater system, which end up in Long Island Sound. But the concern is, in a major storm, Long Island Sound rises. And at some point, if it gets high enough, the water is going to come from Long Island Sound through the, through the storm systems. And then, you know, your water has no place to go. Is that, is there something you could do? Is that a risk, first of all? And number two, is there something you can do about it?
Yes, we did look at that potential and we have inlet grates in the yard that are lower than our finished floor elevation, so that would act as a relief. Um, so if we did have water coming back at us, it would surcharge our drainage structures and then come out at grade um, before ever reached an elevation that would go into the front entrance. So that's kind of the approach. We always try to look at that scenario and see what would happen when we're overwhelmed like that.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Levy?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to discuss a little bit about the design intent. Uh, that, that you have a historic facade and, um, the entrance, now that it's being, um, reconfigured.
Can you go back to the elevation of the entrance?
Uh, you know, it, it's, it's, it's an interesting, um, exercise in how, how to make it, um, uh, fit in and be, um, consistent with, uh, you know, not an add-on, but something that looks a more integral and, and, and appropriate, uh, would, would be something that, uh, I think, I mean, at least in, in this view, it looks, it looks about right. Uh, but I don't know, you know, it's just a drawing. So the, the details and making it, uh, creating some kind of, uh, relationship and, uh, uh, to the existing, uh, historic structure, I think it seems to be a, a good eye, approach. And in the back of the building, I think that the idea of, of creating something which is more of like a jewel in a jewel box is a fun idea, some, something that, that has, uh, you know, the, it can be different. Uh, but there again, uh, how, you know, you could, you could be a little bit more playful. Uh, but I think that the front facade is, is a, an opportunity to, uh, to mix in and, and give it, uh, a context.
So, but here's a great, um, photo I got from the Historic District Commission. This is what the school looked like originally.
It's beautiful.
And so it, it, it is my sense that th- this facade accepting the addition, that it's the additions it's already got, that what is being proposed to us is closer to the ex- to the original structure. In, if you look at that front entry, uh, the proposal is much closer to the original and it is being brought back it, it, to what it was. I don't know, Mr. Stein, if that was something in your mind, but it, it would seem that it's actually bringing back, uh, the historic appearance. And to that, I believe, I don't know which one of you is better to ask, but, um, Mr. Waters, Mr. Stein, I assume you discussed this question of historic preservation. I know you've worked with the community. Uh, I, the HDC is, of course, the Historic District Commission is, of course, very eager to see historic buildings preserved in Greenwich. Have you, as you discuss this, is there appetite to actually put a historic overlay on this building? Which gives you certain zoning benefits as well, Mr. Stein? And what is the dialogue with the community been about the existing building? And I'm sorry, Mr. Stein, I will stop sharing and give you back your facade.
Okay.
You could put it back up, but I thought that was interesting. I'm happy to send this photo to James Waters to, for distribution as well. I, or to Peter Low.
Chair for that. That's a good picture. And, you know, I, I, there's, there seems to be more than one design presented here. So I know that these things are, are malleable at the moment. So I, I would just encourage what, uh, what, uh, Madam Chair was saying and, 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 uh, just be, uh, conscious of the idea of, of, you know, being, uh, thinking about the detailing and, and supporting.
And the history.
Existing and, and the existing and, and even enhancing, uh, the character of facade.
In other words, it doesn't have those, the corbels on the additions, but that's a cost that the BET would probably not be happy with. But, well, Mr. Waters, what have you heard from the community?
Yeah, I mean, l- look, what we've heard from the community is, is people's, um, you know, people call, yeah, we, we've heard this mentioned by Board of Ed members, by, um, uh, parents and neighbors, th- they call the building iconic, right? Uh, I, I don't think any, obviously no one was alive when it was originally built. But there's, there's a great sense that it's, it's really important to the fabric of downtown Old Greenwich. Um, we have, I, I, I think I'd be remiss not to mention that we have a couple architects who are members of our Building Committee, voting members, um, are the Vice Chair Jackie Welsh and Leander Kruger, who also sits on the Architectural Review Commission. Um, and, uh, the two of them have really worked hard with Silver Petricelli and their architects to, um, really trying to find the sweet spot. So the reason we pre- presented options is we haven't solidified our exact choice yet. I think we're open, continue to be open to feedback, but I think maintaining, um, and, and preserving the historic nature of the building has been important to everybody that we have discussed this with. Um, Madam Chair, I can't say that we have, uh, the Building Committee has actively considered, uh, what you suggested, a, a historic overlay. Um, I, I think, you know, I'm happy to bring it up at our next, uh, Building Committee meeting and certainly happy for feedback on that.
Yeah, I mean, it, I'm just throwing it out because it gets, uh, if you were up against your FAR limits, it does give you a bonus. Uh, but on the other hand, the, if you've heard from the community that they're interested in the preservation of this building, uh, the other thing, uh, we can get, we can get you help with is I, I believe the HDC would be delighted to dig out pictures or the Historical Society would be delighted to dig out pictures, uh, so that you can align with some of these points that Mr. Levy's making. And with mindful of cost, uh, uh, obviously that the additional detail would be costly. So it's just a question of which option you go to, that it be the most reflective of the heritage of. Mr. Levy, you have your hand back up. But he's not there. Mr. Low, did you wish to speak?
Uh, just to say that, uh, uh, in support of what you've been saying, uh, I would just add consistency with the Plan of Conservation and Development. Um, and in the preservation of so-called iconic structures.
And the community, that, that thing that we heard, to your point, Mr. Low, what we heard repeatedly at every single public session is that people were looking to preserve this New England feeling, the New England character, and they wanted that that flavor to town to remain. So preserving historic structures, uh, nineteen oh seven, I believe, is this building?
Oh, two.
Oh, two. So it's something to consider and to be respectful of its history. Uh, Mr. McRae?
Uh, Mr. Stein, can you just flip through the options real quick?
Yeah, abs- absolutely. And, um, as I do this, you know, we also look contextually. The town Cos Cob had a similar design challenge as they did their renovations. So we did, we did some research. We saw their attempt at also addressing an entry level at grade. The architecture in terms of its scale and its materiality is very, very close. So there's another project that I think we could look towards as, as an example of trying to resolve this. So option, option one, um, is to, again, with very little articulation, what you saw from before is that this upper piece is all exists. So that is there. We're sort of sticking with the same proportions on this, bringing in an entryway and then just really expanding that glass that currently are doors that are located just essentially at this level. We're also maintaining the coins or the brick coins that are sort of located and articulated in each of those projected corners along with the water table, um, uh, precast pieces that are located, the stone pieces though. So it's sort of keep that consistency that's working across. Here are the two options and then option B, or the other option was, was to create a projected item, which would provide cover, provide some cover from, from the weather, but to give a more defined entry piece. So, you know, two different approaches, solving the same functionality, solving the same drainage issue, solving the same accessibility issue. And that's what we're looking at is right now, we're sort of contemplating and playing with the right proportions here. We're still contemplating one column, two columns, really playing with the architecture, but it's a balance between the two that you show at the moment.
And in fact, if it's, and I'll make sure that this gets out to everybody and I need to, well, um, in fact, the original school didn't have the projection, it looks like.
That, that is correct. And that's why we, that's why we are, you know, we're working towards this option, which was close to that.
Save some money for other enhancements in the architecture that it will, and not do the projection.
Yeah, but the original, original school from nineteen whatever had, had a stair in the front. That was, that's the big.
Yeah, it has the stair. I know. I see that the stair is there. Do you want to look at it again?
No, actually, I think one of the, the things, the, as I see it in these two renderings, is except for the walls as they, uh, curve around to the door, um, you have a monumental building with very significant architecture. And the front door is an afterthought. As opposed to here, I have a monumental building. I have these curved, um, walls that bring me around to something that says screens. Here's the front door. That's, I think, what, uh, people would be looking for.
Well, but that was what it was too, Nick, was a monumental building that just sat there. You're respecting the history. So I'm going to leave it to the architects that are on salary. Mr. Waters, you have your hand up?
Yeah, the, the one thing I would just, I, I think it's important and, uh, to highlight for, for this group is, you know, y- you are all probably aware of, of, uh, the change in the front entry at Cos Cob School that happened after the school burned down. Yes, we used to have a big stair up in the front and, uh, now it does not. So in our minds, what we're doing here, uh, not only solving, uh, the ADA front entry uh, but we're doing something very similar to what was done. And I think, uh, you know, uh, people like at Cos Cob.
Okay, so we're going to dig out, I, that, that's easy to do. The HDC is also listening. I'm looking at the list of people, so we'll be able to connect all that. Um, folks, how would you feel about turning to the public for comment now?
Um, just real quick, is my, my, as I were running the numbers, the lot is about a three hundred nineteen thousand square feet, so that gives you an FAR of a hundred thousand plus or minus. So I just would say that I would be careful about a historical overlay. You know, one edge is sharp and gives you a lot of great things for the building, but the other side actually you have to be aware of as well as I don't, once that's done, then you're done with the building. And you just have to be very careful about that.
But you get more FAR and the question is if they're going to go with.
They've got a lot of FAR because, a lot of FAR because only, they're only proposing about eighty thousand square feet total.
Right, Nick, but you're telling people to not be consistent with the P O C D when you say, don't do a historical.
I, I, I think it's up to, it's up to the Board of Education to kind of.
I agree with you. It's up to the Board of Education. That's a great, a great out. Okay, Mr. Devine? And then we'll go to the public.
I just wanted to add, in our pre-application submittal, we had the floor area ratios calculated based on what we had at the time. So there's been a little discussion about floor area ratio. I can tell you that we showed a floor area ratio existing of zero point two-two-five. And that went up to zero point two-four-nine with the addition.
You're in good shape.
The maximum is zero point three-one-five.
You're in good shape then, so let's drop the issue. I think that was the point. Okay, thank you very much. That really clarified things because we didn't have that. I'm, is it all right with everybody if we turn to the public for comment?
Madam Chairman, should I stop sharing or keep my screen active?
I would, um, I, I, let's stop sharing for now. And we'll go to the public. Uh, folks, there's a lot of people here. I don't know how many are going to speak, but it looks like quite a few. I'm going to ask Patrick to time for three minutes. That should be ample. If someone has said what you're going to say kindly, don't repeat it. And, uh, you know, if you can talk in less time, please do that. It's, uh, great. But, um, we're eager to hear your input and we'll incorporate it to any guidance we give the applicant. The first speaker is Jennifer Benzavango, who is the principal of this school. She will be followed by Representative Steve Maskers. State Representative Steve Maskers. Go ahead, Ms. Benzavango.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the Commission. My name is Jen Benzavango and I am the proud principal of this remarkable school community. I want to thank the members of the Building Committee and our professional team for the yeoman's work of late in bringing this very important project to fruition. I want to thank the members of the building committee and our professional team for the yeoman's work of late in bringing this very important project to fruition. As the team has shared, I ask for your support in bringing our school to a reconfigured, safe, secure ADA compliant school for all members of our community. Our iconic school has stood as a landmark on Sound Beach Avenue for over a hundred twenty years. I know there has been discussion by some members of the public to consider knocking the school down in lieu of renovation. I would ask that this not be a consideration of the Commission. Our school is the daily home of over four hundred students and seventy-five members of our crew, as we call them, working in unison to provide an exceptional educational experience for the children of Old Greenwich. This renovation will meet the needs of our community for another one hundred twenty years and would ensure not only the safety of all who enter our doors, but a safe access throughout. Our project does not include nice to haves, but includes need to haves, including but not limited to a fire sprinkler system that currently does not exist, central heating and cooling. It's important to note that our current ventilation system, as we live through a global pandemic, was to open the windows much the same way Old Greenwich School responded to the Spanish Flu of nineteen eighteen. We look forward to being able to welcome everyone with a common, secure entrance, inclusive of those requiring accessibility. And finally, I would like to welcome any members of the Commission for a tour of our property and school building at any time. I believe the members of our team would agree. I know this building intimately. But for the attic, which Lawrence or James would be happy to show you, I don't go up there. As always, we, we would love to welcome the Commission to come read to our students as well. We value our partnership with all community members. Thank you.
Ms. Benzavango, and I've said this to a few other people, the Commission can only look at the site plan that is submitted to it. We cannot, we cannot suggest a completely different site plan. So we can't say to the applicant, tear down the building. That is the Board of Education's decision and the building committee's decision, and I suppose the BET's decision. But all we can do is act on what's before us. Now, can we suggest that it leave enough space to expand it as necessary and, or maybe repurpose? That's something we can do, but we have to act on what's before us. So save that ammunition for all those people that have it in their lane. Thank you very much. Mr. Maskers is next, followed by Alan Gunsberg.
Thank you, Marguerite. I really appreciate the chance to speak to you. So I'm a resident of Old Greenwich. I live a block and a half from the building. My children all attended the school. I've been a resident for twenty-six or twenty-seven years. I am the state representative for the last five or, well, five years. It's my, it's my third term and I've been on the RTM for twenty years. The school intimately, I know it's old, partially decrepit with air conditioners hanging off, chewing away at the mortar. The need for renovation, rehabilitation, ADA accessibility strikes me very strongly. I'm an advocate, a very strong supporter. I want to thank Jamie Waters for the effort of the building committee and all of you for the time you put into it. Couple of observations and questions or things I would recommend, waterproofing the boiler area, making sure that there is a onsite generator, because in the past, the generators were portable. So if there is a flooding condition and we lose electricity, I want to make sure that there is a, a, um, a generator that can provide to pump water out of the boiler area, once it's been waterproofed. Lastly, in terms of infrastructure issues, I want to work closely with the team and with the architects to the extent possible, when we get to an agreement on a building, to seek maximum reimbursement from the state for the building and to see whether parts of the building that are revolving the sewage sewer lines, the courtyard, et cetera, can be carved out. Once we get the approval, once we agree on the amount, we apply to the state for reimbursement. I'm going to look to see whether pieces of the reimbursement could, could fall within other categories of infrastructure where the reimbursement rates could be at sixty, seventy or eighty percent. I can't guarantee any of that, but those would be the strategies to maximize the total level of reimbursement from the state. Um, I think the accessibility issues in this town are crucial. If we are looking at diversity, if we're looking at inclusion, ADA accessibility, the fact that we have not made that commitment across our town is shameful. And that's why I urge you to consider this as well. Um, you can count on my support. I really love the work you're doing. P and Z, God bless you. I've sat through about four of your meetings.
Only four?
And you haven't committed suicide, right? That you haven't committed suicide is beyond me.
Oh, well, I think the same of you, Mr. Maskers. I listen to the legislature and wonder how you survive those sessions. They are painful. Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Gunsberg, if you would go ahead and Mr. Gunsberg will be followed by Mary Tobin.
Alan, you're muted.
Madam Chair, before I read my statement, uh, in nineteen oh two, people in wheelchairs were not allowed in public school. So that's why there were stairs in front. That's changed with the, uh, with the IDEA and, and that students with disabilities are in public schools. But I have a statement and as you know, I've been the liaison to this building committee uh, and have attended not as many meetings as Mr. Waters has said, but a fair number of them. So I'm here today to talk about the importance of remedying, remedying the OCR of the Old Greenwich School. As you know, the OCR is the Office of Civil Rights, a federal agency that enforces civil rights laws in education. In twenty twenty-one, the OCR received a complaint alleging that the Old Greenwich School was violating the Rehab Act of nineteen seventy-three and was not in compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. The complaint specifically alleged that the school was not physically accessible to persons with mobility impairments because the upper floors are accessible only by stairs. I support this municipal improvement because we have to follow the law. We have to ensure that all students, regardless of their disabilities, have equal access to education. The Old Greenwich School is a valuable asset to our community and it's important that it be accessible to everyone. The Rehab Act of nineteen seventy-three and the ADA both prohibit discrimination on the basis of disability in education. The Rehab Act applies to schools that receive federal financial assistance and the ADA applies to all public schools. These laws require schools to make reasonable accommodations for students with disabilities, such as providing wheelchair ramps and accessible bathrooms. The OCR investigation found the school was not physically accessible to people with mobility impairments because the upper floors are accessible only by stairs. As a result, the Greenwich Public Schools agreed to remit, to a remediation plan that will make the Old Greenwich School more accessible to students with disabilities. The construction plan includes the following modifications for ADA compliance, installing an elevator, making the main entrance ADA accessible, remodeling the student toilets to make them fully compliant, a new ADA playground, accessibility of secondary entrances around the building that will be addressed, specifically the gymnasium and the auditorium, the public entrance that will be upgraded with a ramp and a stone, and stone repaired to make them ADA compliant. A wheelchair lift for the stage, modifications, the most existing door openings and new interior doors, so width, depth and accessible clearance requirements will take place. Door hardware will also be upgraded for compliance with accessibility standards, new cabinetry, counter spaces, sinks that comply with height and reach requirements as well as neat, as neat clearance. New compliant casework in all accessible classrooms, minimally one classroom per grade level, as well as offices and one-of-a-kind spaces, such as the media center, the nurse's office will be made accessible. And finally, raised letters and braille designations will be installed. These changes are necessary to remove the OCR from Old Greenwich School. And I urge you to support the remediation plan. It's an important step forward and towards ensuring that all students, regardless of their disabilities, have an equal opportunity to succeed. And I thank you for, for the time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gunsberg. Uh, Mary Tobin is next, followed by Erica Jacoby.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Mary Tobin and I'm a resident of Old Greenwich. My son Dylan will be starting third grade at Old Greenwich School in the fall. I currently serve on the PTA at Old Greenwich School as a facilities committee representative. And I also represent Old Greenwich as a District Six RTM member. In these roles as parent, school volunteer and elected community representative, I'm speaking to you this afternoon to offer my wholehearted support of the current plans being presented to you today by the OGS Building Committee. Even though it's late summer and many families are away on vacation or picking up their kids from camps, please know that OGS families remain fully committed behind the proposed improvement plans and are ready to move forward as soon as possible. District Six has also lent its official support. In April, seventeen of our twenty members signed a letter to the First Selectmen, BOE and BET imploring them to quote, "Take steps to advance the project with a greater sense of urgency, commercial savvy and confidence in the judgment and talents of the Old Greenwich School Building Committee." "We look forward to an alteration plan that keeps our children in school, on campus, and preserves the historic structure of the existing building. We are ready to move forward as soon as possible on this critical project for our children's health, safety and quality of their learning environment." "Thank you for our service, for your service to our town and for your support in making this work move forward. Really, we really appreciate it. Thank you."
Thank you very much. Erica Jacoby is next, followed by Alex Pop.
Yes. Hi, good afternoon. My name is Erica Jacoby. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair and Commission. I'm a former PTA president at Old Greenwich School and start, currently serve as the PTA Facilities Liaison with our parent community. Um, the OGS community is in full support of this critical project. The building committee and SPA representatives from SPA have met with our parents um, multiple times over the last eight months, parents and students, to hear us, to understand our needs and to incorporate our feedback into the plans that they've shown you today. We very much feel that we've been involved and heard all along the way. We're asking that the Commission work expeditiously, obviously in partnership with the building committee, to move this project along, to ensure that our children have a clean, healthy, safe space to continue to learn in as soon as possible. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Mr. Pop, if you would go ahead and he'll be followed by Jenny Larkin, who is right now the last speaker. If there's anyone else, please raise your virtual hand. Uh, Mr. Pop?
Thank, thank you. Good, good afternoon. How, how are you? Just a couple, two, two issues. First, I'm hoping that the Old Greenwich community understands that any stipulation or agreement with the tree warden does not mean the trees will be replanted. As we know, at New Lebanon, there was a signed agreement from the building committee, yet they came up over forty trees short of the, of the, uh, agreement, what was signed. And last week, the neighbors actually met with the tree warden to highlight some of the unplanted, underplanted areas and the shortcomings. And I believe that we still received some resistance from the building committee. Also, on a general note, the planning and zoning should understand that, or be mindful that from the BET budget meeting from, from January, the BOE proposed budget supporting document reads, since twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, enrollment has decreased approximately four hundred students. That's across the district and, and GPS has eliminated twenty K five classrooms, average of twenty students per classroom. So generally enrollment is on the decline across the district. So we need to be really careful when we're expanding, uh, the footprint of any of our buildings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pop. And just for clarity again, um, whether we understand or we're mindful, it is, once the Board of Education has set a number of students, it, P and Z is not statutorily, from a legal perspective, we don't question that. That's set. It's kind of like how many people you think are going to live in a house you build. We tell you if the house is big, if it works in the neighborhood or whatever, if it meets the zoning regulations, but the enrollment is, the BOE standards and what their specs are is not within our legal mandate. But we did try to ask a little bit of that question tonight, just because we know the public is interested. Uh, thank you. Uh, before you leave, Mr. Pop, I think Mr. McRae wants to.
I'd like to set the record straight about eleven trees. It's not forty short. We had forty too many. We planted all of the trees that we could on the site when it was completed. The forty trees that were left over, we were allowed actually to give to the Board of Education to plant on other schools. So it's not forty trees missing, or forty trees too many we didn't use. And the landscape plan that's actually at the school is quite extensive. Uh, it's not, has not matured, but it's quite extensive. So I think actually moving forward, really, we're talking about a landscape plan that actually is going to fit a site whenever that is designed and comes in to see us.
I've just lost, Mr. Pop, I.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'm sorry. I, I was a little too quick on the button there, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mr. Pop. You can blame it on Patrick and as a result, yeah, as a result of that, um, his punishment will be, he'll dig out the planting plan for New Lab and show you whatever numbers um, to show you, to illustrate Mr. McRae's point. I believe Mr. McRae is in fact correct, Nick. You can record that.
That would be great.
Yeah. So you come on in and, and they'll dig it out for you. I believe Mr. McRae is correct because I just had this discussion recently with both the tree warden and the head of the tree conservancy about there wasn't an overage of trees at New Lab, but we'll make sure, because you know how committed we are to everybody for the P O C D told us that. So we'll check. Come talk to us.
That's interesting because a building committee member actually at one time did say that there were forty trees short, but that's another story. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Waters, and then we'll go to Jenny Larkin and followed by Claire Kilgallen.
Yeah, the, the only thing I would just say is, is, uh, look, we're, we're, from the building committee's perspective, we're committed to working with not only you all and Board of Ed and, and BT and everybody. Uh, but you know, next week, uh, we're doing a walkthrough with the tree warden. We, we certainly, we've allocated money in our budget, uh, for landscaping for trees. Um, and so we intend to do that. You have our commitment on that.
Yes. And Mr. Waters, while we're on this topic, and we'll do this in the wrap-up guidance, I was, I may have misunderstood the budget discussion that I listened to for Central Middle recently. The cost of tree removal was included in their landscape budget. And someone made the comment that P and Z has these excessive landscape requirements. Well, tree removal is site prep. It is not landscaping and it doesn't have anything to do with our landscaping regulations. So please don't say that. Whenever you all, Mr. Stein, I hope you're listening because it was their architect who said, well, we're removing twenty-three hundred caliber inches of trees and it's, and that's a big cost and it's part of the landscaping. I, I swear, I thought I heard them say, I could have been, I could be dead wrong. The second thing is, if you find the DPW and town requirements, such as sidewalks and the curbing on the sidewalks that's required to be granted, et cetera, those are DPW requirements and not part of the zoning regulations. So y'all don't come dump the dead guy on us, okay? Just wanting to be clear. All right, Jenny Larkin. If you kindly, go ahead.
Okay. And I'm at a computer without a camera, so you'll be spared with.
Excuses, excuses, Madam Larkin. I've heard that one from you before. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Thank you so much for all the hard work that all of you do and, and all of the, uh, contributions you make to this town. I'm just, uh, I'm just heartened to hear the discussions about this school and, and as somebody who, I went to Parkway School, so I went to one of the, uh, the newer schools in town. But of course, this is not only an iconic building, but, um, it was, uh, donated, built by, um, Mr. Havemeyer, who is famous for building, you know, donating money to build schools and other municipal buildings in town. So, um, it is absolutely worthy of preservation. And it also, uh, being that it has grown over the years, as the school population grew in Old Greenwich, uh, formerly Sound Beach, uh, it, it, it almost is like a, a history in, in and of itself of, of education and how a school grows over the years to meet the growing needs of a community. And I did just want to, um, I did, uh, I found the, the postcard on the Historical Society website that I, that I shared and, um, I just wanted to, um, say that the, the quote on the Historical Society website says, "The cornerstone," and this is in nineteen oh two, "the cornerstone for the new district schoolhouse at Sound Beach, Connecticut was laid on Wednesday, November twelfth by H O Havemeyer. Mr. Havemeyer had given seven acres of land for the school site and ten thousand dollars to enable a satisfactory building to be built." You see, the district had already appropriated twenty thousand dollars for the school. The sum was found to be insufficient for the building desired. So, um, you know, I just, again, I just want, uh, the, the idea of historic overlay would be, would be great if there's anything that could be done during this project to, um, uh, preserve the building in perpetuity because, um, as we know with history, uh, twenty-five years from now, thirty years from now, another group of people might uh, also be looking to demolish this building and, uh, part of our town. and a part of our town history in order to uh, uh, save money and build something new. So uh, that's about all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Larkin. You're on the HTC, right?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Um, and we volunteered, you guys, you saw that. All right. So she muted herself.
Thank you. Yes.
Um, and Claire Kilgallen.
Good evening, Madam Chair. I just wanted to thank the Commission for its work. I wanted to thank the Building Committee for OG for its deep work. I know they've done a tremendous amount of work to um, do outreach with the community, and I think you've seen that. Um, I do support uh, Commission Member McRae's statement about the overage of trees at New Lebanon. And I'll, let me be plain. Looking back at every project that's happened before on schools is not the way to approach this. This Commission has instituted robust regulations effective January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. So let's just look forward and, and, and be productive about the work that's being done. I appreciate what is trying to be done with the regulations and landscaping. And uh, you know, the committees are doing their best to support those regulations. So just wanted to thank you again for that, and I know it will make a difference. And hopefully it will clear the air on, um, it, it sets a balance between um, you know, what's being developed versus the surrounding community. So I, I do appreciate the uh landscaping and the screening um ideas that, that sit behind your regulations. So I just want to make that clear to the public because we're hearing, you know, we, we hear people giving negatives. We're here to be positive. And, and I just wanted to say thank you for your support in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kilgallen. And thank you for all the work she's doing on a Building Committee. Um, okay, that's it for the public speaking. Uh, we actually didn't get very much actionable input. Uh, people seem to be supportive. The people who came are supportive of the direction that you're headed with this. Uh, as we said, we can't, we can't address the issue of capacity. Based on the P O C D and the importance that your community has placed on the protection of a historic building, we would definitely be supportive of that. However, it is the decision of the Building Committee in conjunction with the Board of Ed. If you all came to us and said, taking down the building, because that's what the Board of Ed thinks is right, uh, we would respect your decision. We would like to see Greenwich's heritage protected if the community agrees with this position. What else, folks? Is there any other guidance you would like to give on this, especially Nick? Guy, you were on the New Lab Building Committee. You got any thoughts on this?
Actually, actually, I'd like to commend the uh, the guys at SPA. The schematic design report was quite thorough. Uh, it touched uh, on pretty much every aspect of the building and its deficiencies or efficiencies. Um, I suggest, I highly suggest that anybody who's interested in this project, read that because it actually talks about the building as it is and how it should be. Uh, a lot of, a lot of questions can be answered as to what could happen to the building or what has to happen to the building. Um, but I think actually from here as a pre-app, understanding how the Building Committee works, they're going in the right direction. A lot of things to kind of uh ironed out, but uh, that's why we're doing this.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Wells, Ms. Jenkins?
I have no.
I'll, I'll just comment. Uh, I really like your plans on the uh HVAC, energy, conservation. You know, I think you're working with an existing building. I think you're, you're doing the best you can with an existing building, obviously, within the mostly budget constraints that you have. But uh, I'm sure you're getting excellent input from Peter Schweinworth, who's on your committee. And uh, you know, all of us have a very high opinion of him. So thank you for listening to him. That's it.
And um, Mr. Wells, again, not, the, the part that is in our, in our lane is from an environmental point of view, which the state law does encourage us to support. Uh, from an environmental point of view, demolition is apparently more damaging environmentally. Uh, particularly, I believe in a building like this one where there's asbestos and other issues that would have to be handled. So I'd leave that to you, but I do understand that environmentally it is more positive when you can protect a structure. Uh, and so uh, the Public Act, just, I'm being a geek, but Public Act twenty-one, twenty-nine, which passed in twenty twenty-one, it says that we should encourage people to be environmentally uh responsible on planning and zoning commissions. So this is good. I think that's it for the Commission comments. Uh, we are happy to help you with any research you want done to ask. I'm sure you saw Jenny Larkin here. I'm sure the Historical Society would be delighted to, to assist with that. Is there any questions that we can answer for you? Mr. Stein? Mr. Waters?
Yeah, the, the only thing I would just ask is, is uh, you know, based on the notes I took during this, it, it sounds like um, we owe you some, some answers, obviously, on um, what the, the final front entry looks like.
When you do your, when you do your formal app, you'll come in with your entry. Um, we had a preference that if you were keeping the building, you'd be as historically appropriate as possible.
Yep.
Uh, we then asked you about waterproofing. Go ahead, Mr. Waters.
Nope, nope. That, that, no, keep going. Go ahead.
Protecting your equipment from flooding. Uh, we, but I think you've got that under advisement. Uh, when you do your drainage, that's one of the questions that's going to come up for you. When you submit a formal application, you're going to hear from, from the DPW Drainage Engineers. They're going to be asking you those questions. The Sewer Department's going to be talking to you. Um, you're probably already working with them uh, because you had the question on the lateral. Um, the force main was, yeah, Old Greenwich doesn't have capacity problems anymore, right? Patrick, in general? Because the force main was replaced uh, six or seven years ago?
Yeah, one of the last, yeah, I was gonna say five, but it could be, right?
Yeah.
I, I think, I think the issues, and, and I think Mr. Stein alluded to is infrastructure from the, this building to the, to the street. So I don't think there's a town where you're, you're meager by issue.
Doesn't sound like it. Um, I, just one question. I probably misheard somebody. I thought someone said you were relocating an existing mature tree. Is that inaccurate? That you were moving a tree?
No.
That, that is incorrect.
Okay, good. Cause I was, I was going to tell you that that was a bad idea. Don't waste the money. That, even if the BET doesn't recognize that that's a waste of money, your little P and Z will tell you they don't, don't, you're normally make it. Mr. Lowe, is there anything you would like to add uh, with your privileged role on being, of being on the committee?
No, I'm just trying to avoid uh saying something awkward.
I'm sure you wouldn't.
Given your characterization of my position. I know, I think every, I think we've covered uh, most of the issues. And I, I think the, the purpose of this session is for uh, the, the Building Committee and its, its uh, its professionals to ask questions and for us to ask questions and people seem, and the public. And we've now exhausted all three groups. And uh, so we're ready to roll.
All right. Um, Mr. Stein, you know, uh, our planners are available, we're available. And also, just so you know, you can come in anytime you want for another pre-app without doing anything fussy. You can come in with two back of the envelopes, two elevations of what you're thinking of for the entry and just sit and talk to us about what you're thinking for Plan A versus Plan B. It does not, it would be like this, but you don't have to do anything formal. You can just tell Patrick you want to do another pre-app to discuss the facade of the building. And we're happy to have you talk without any money being spent on designs and drawings. We would much rather have you talk to us several times in an informal setting without a lot of designs than have the town spend money on designs and then have somebody hate it. Which, as you know, since we're never controversial here, wouldn't happen anyway. All right. Um, so with that, I think we can thank you. Anybody have any parting comments? All right. I think we can thank you and say goodbye and uh, for a great job done. Thank you very much to all.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Bye-bye.
And here we are, just us chickens.
Took the words right out of my mouth.
All right. Uh, Mr. Tessie has his hand up, but I'm not seeing him.
He's hiding.
He is, should be joining over.
All right. Okay. And who is Sean Wallace? Is he with Mr. Tessie?
Uh, I'm not sure. I'll let Mr. Tessie.
Mr. Tessie, are you accompanied by somebody named Sean Wallace?
Yes, that's my, the principal of my client.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Wallace. Uh, why is he? Do you see him? I see the hand is up, but I can't find him.
Just join the room.
Okay. Alrighty. So moving on to the next discussion item. We have at eighty-four South Water Street, we have a pre-application review for a building that I, that has been in place and empty or semi-empty for a long time.
Long time.
And it's um, now uh, being proposed for demolition at uh, and to be replaced with ten dwelling units, a three-story building. And uh, it is a forty thousand square foot lot. And the building, well, I'll let Mr. Tessie describe uh, the removal of the building, et cetera. Mr. Tessie, and welcome, Mr. Wallace. Uh, Mr. Tessie, if you would proceed.
Yes. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. We are here this evening, as you pointed out, uh, presenting a property that uh, has been substantially vacant uh, since Haskell left. Was a manufacturing facility with offices and storage. Uh, the building's um, approximately forty thousand square feet. It does have a single floor in it today, uh, primarily without call a mezzanine of, I think it's about three thousand square feet of office space. The uh, property had uh, some environmental issues, probably affecting uh, the redevelopment of the property for a number of years on economic grounds, primarily as I understood it. Our client has spent a substantial amount of money uh, working with their license environmental protect uh, professionals uh, in the state of Connecticut to essentially arrive at a condition of the property where the environmental issues have been, if not fully addressed, substantially addressed. Um, which would allow uh, at the end of the day, for the redevelopment of the property as a residential, for residential purposes. The uh, client actually, I think, appeared before the Commission uh, last summer. Um, attorney Higney may have been representative, representing them uh, with uh, continued commercial type of use of the property. And that was a, another pre-app. And uh, I don't think that proposal sat well with the Commission or, or area residents.
Yeah, as I remember, it did not.
Right. And um, and our client has uh, spoke to a number of area residents and uh, certainly has observed the uh, redevelopment of the property to the south. Uh, our other client, Mr. uh, O'Connor, that's at eighty-eight South Water Street, where the uh, new build, new uh, it was twelve or fourteen unit building, uh, was approved by the Commission. And now it's fully occupied with uh, with residents. It's a uh, um, tenant situation there. I believe our client already has a waiting list. So it's good to see that the uh, the property has been put to good use. And the idea of having rentals on the property has proven to be a, a good one for the community and for our client. The idea of our client was to, you know, substantially replicate the, the efforts made by uh, Mr. O'Connor at eighty-eight South Water Street. There are less units, some are a bit larger, so it provides actually an additional mix for the community. Uh, if we can continue to proceed with this project, working with the Commission closely. The challenge here uh, relates to being in a coastal area, you know, management zone. Uh, we're in the eight-fourteen flood zone. It's an A zone, it's not a B zone. Um, so we don't have a high velocity situation at all on the property. We spent a lot of time speaking to both Tony DeAndrea and his brother Glenn DeAndrea, whose expertise is actually in the area of camp, um, to come up with ideas to uh, address concerns of the Commission and was probably expressed by Mr. Goucher on behalf of the Department of Environmental Energy Protection, Energy Environmental Protection, both. Um, we're, we're going to get into that in a second. The, of a zoning standpoint, um, you know, we have the non-conformities that run the gamut on this property from the historical use, and it's been used on occasion over the years. It hasn't remained totally fallow for uh, for storage, uh, primarily uh, of different kinds uh, under different owners since Haskell owned the property. Um, but we have a situation now where I think the time has come. Interestingly, the uh, essentially the Sleckman's Office has uh, contacted our client regarding addressing the uh, the condition of the building. So our clients, I believe at this point in time, best addressed really by demolishing the building. Um, the demolition of the building that won't necessarily take away the rights, but under the state law regarding continuation of non-conforming uses, because that's not the intent. Um, and the Commission's recognized it. Thank you for the okay. I don't get them too often.
You do not.
Anyway.
We're just snarky sometimes. We're sorry. Oh, okay. No, and we get snarky. Yes, you are correct. The state protects, state law protects this twenty seventeen.
Right. And the Haskell project, when I was there, they had no parking at all at the site except.
Yeah.
For, for moving trucks back and forth. And that was not a cool thing because I think they had thirty or forty employees at their height. So all roads seemed to point to making an, an effort, concerted effort working with you all here. We would need variances, we believe. Um, because, partly because of heights. Well, at, they, they get the thirty feet of height, deal with the flood zone uh, is a primary issue.
But you've already got, you, you get to keep your non-conformity, aren't you? Aren't you higher than, than the conformity than?
Well, we have one, we have one portion, like a tower, that is higher.
Oh, well, I would get rid of that.
There you'll want to extend that to the uh, most of the building. I, I don't think so. Um, if we were in the residential zone, we wouldn't have an issue because of the way you calculate um, that.
Yes. It's six, one, twenty-seven. It's getting you into a problem. Okay.
Residential use. On the property next door, eighty-eight, the Commission, in its settlement, that was a settlement, if you all, well, most of you recall. That was a settlement with the prior owner of the property. And that resulted in essentially an agreement to follow the R six height of thirty-five feet. And so that building is thirty-five feet tall. Um, now, that's, and that's the goal here, to have the thirty-five feet. Uh, the hardship being, obviously, being in the res, being in the uh, um, so uh, the art, the um, flood hazard zone, the fourteen, they pointed it out. Uh, so just point that out in my cover letter to you of the, for the application. That is, that's the primary issue for us. And I think that with the Commission's blessing, the Board of Appeals would recognize that and given this particular use proposal. The overall floor area will actually be reduced substantially.
Yes, I saw that.
Um, and it, it'll be in compliance, actually. But we also have to be cognizant of the needs. So what, what we did in the application itself is we proposed parking. If you look at it, we proposed parking um, below the building, covered parking below the building. below the building, covered parking below the building, raise the first floor well above the minimum, which would be one foot above, I think we're, so we're at fifteen feet above the existing. I'm saying that, I'm sorry, we're fifteen, we'll be at fifteen feet at least. Existing, I think we're at eight, in the area, six to eight feet. So, we'll be well above the, the minimum requirements to meet the flood zone regulations. But we also come up with a creative idea, the client did, the architect did, is to have, that's the southern, on the northern portion of the property, a ramp going up to an entrance for the building. And that area will be above the eight-fourteen zone requirements. And so, in the case of storms, that could be problematic, the cars could be moved up, actually, onto that area. My suggestion was that it could also be a recreation area, the client liked the idea to have a tennis court. Everything's pickleball nowadays, I don't know about that, but they can have a recreation area for the most part there, and have it a multipurpose, which is very usage situation, which to me, I think is creative and appropriate. I am aware that staff and Mr. Rowe pointed out to me a concern about dry access to the property. Cutting to the chase, we are right across the street. We have a, we have one of our cross streets that, as we all know, on South Water Street, on the west side, the, there's a hill, and so, it runs up. And so, we're literally less than fifty feet away from that area. You know, so, dry access, question is, how do you get there? And what we're proposing, or what we've talked about, we shouldn't say, is actually positioning, if you look at the site plan.
Yep, to reposition, okay.
Yeah, so we can actually position the at the property vehicle, whether it's a Ford F-one-fifty, like I talked about, but we could actually have at the site at all times a vehicle that has, that's raised up enough in terms of its chassis that will be able to transport, if in fact there's ever a need for it, which would be very rare if it happens, that combination of someone needing to have an emergency service, or get to the hospital or anywhere, across that area without any issue by utilizing that vehicle, which could actually take them to the need-be, whether it's at a hospital again, or to another area. That's something, Pat, that I thought we'd explore with John Goucher, right, and Goucher, that was important.
Yeah, that was a good slip. Okay, so first of all, I'm seeing that the building's not gonna look like the ones to the south, which we'll comment on later, but
Yeah, this is all block, this is block, all block and tackle, you know. Yeah, obviously, it needs architectural expertise.
I, I think, I think. Okay, so Mr. Tessie, in regard to the look of the building?
Yes.
I would be interested to hear, to just have the community comment a little bit, that would, that would be helpful. But in regard to what you're saying with John Goucher, a hundred percent support you and Mr. Wallace going there sooner rather than later.
Yes.
Because I'm sure that Patrick shared with you
Yes.
that, that when we change the regulations for the WB, that was the problem we ran into, was deep. And about the dry, the dry egress, if you can get that issue resolved, I see that as your biggest obstacle.
Well, we can be creative, working together, you know, it's technically advisory to you, but certainly their comments can be taken seriously. Safety is every, safety is, should be on everybody's mind, we agree a hundred percent with that.
With the, with the tricky issue that the WB is pertinent to a state regulation, and I would be very, very careful that we would be respectful of the, of deep, because it's the WB. So, I would expect you, if, please talk to them and get their support.
Well, absolutely, I think we're on the same page there, just hoping we can work together, and you can know, if you, and you can know the location here, the history of South Water Street's been a good one in terms of not, you know, chronically flooding. Get a host study on that, again, working with the Andrea's office. And John spent a fair amount of time, I spent some time with him, on the site next door at eighty, at eighty-eight. So, the good part is, he's familiar with the area and has studied the area over the recent years. So, again, I think we're all on the same page.
Again, there, as you, as you surely also know, they're working on new maps at deep.
Yes.
So, if you all would address that, that I think is the biggest issue. Does the commission have any comments right now? Nick looks very thoughtful, anybody else?
Yes, I have all kinds of comments.
All right.
So, Mr. Tessie, the assumption that a pickup truck going through the floods is, is lack of word, we say this kind of, just off the charts to me.
Well, but let Deep address that.
Well, yeah, but I'm just, what I'm just saying is that, with previous experience in this town, it's more of emergency access to a site, both leaving it and getting to it. We had a host of homes burned down because of flood issues. The fact that actually, oh, it hasn't flooded there in a long time, is something else that should be disregarded, because yeah, it hasn't flooded there in a long time, but when it does, it's gonna be bad, and the maps are coming out to actually make the flood zones even bigger. I do have a question.
Yes.
So, you're at, at AE fourteen.
Yes.
Okay, and you've got a very tall building. Is it possible to make, just thoughts to put in your, on your list of things to look at, to make the proposed garage only the height that it really needs to be, a minimum height to meet the flood, floodplain? Things, because that way, that way, you're not having a very humongous tall building sitting on top of a humongous tall garage.
Oh, the idea is not to be any higher than, than, than the building at thirty.
No, 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 I'm just not talking about the building at, down the street, we're talking about this site.
Yeah.
And what I'm saying is that, as I see the massing of the building in which you have planned, it seems that I have a very tall wall going all the way around the site. Okay. One of it is the garage, no openings to the garage, it's just a big flat vertical wall, and then your elevated parking lot, which I'm still not understanding the preference, you're elevating the parking lot so you can get the cars out of the, out of the garage and park up there. Okay, but the other side of that is, now I have a fifteen-foot-high wall on three sides for the parking lot to be elevated. So, if I'm actually walking, say, down the boardwalk on the riverside, there's a fifteen-foot wall to one side and the rivers to the other. So, if you want to actually go back to what we talked about with the other building, I distinctly remember the chair at the time actually talking about the space to either side of the building, and getting a sense of the water as you pass by. It would seem to me, as you pass by this site, you'd have no idea there was water past there. So, I think that's maybe something to consider, is that you have cars in the garage, you have parking lot up above, but what is it doing to the neighborhood in that, that context? I'm actually building a very tall castle with a big, huge, you know, ramp part all the way around. You talked about, actually briefly about that with their remediation things happening at the site. I know that the building was remediated, but I'm just wondering, has there been soil testings done for the whole site? And where their borings taste, take, taken through the slab of the existing building into the site? And if there have been, when, if you come back, can you actually bring that report with you?
Well, you know, the building, as you, as you well know, the building consumed about ninety-plus percent, existing building, you know, of the site. So, as far as the environmental is concerned, I don't believe Mr. Wallace, who's right here, would have an issue sharing what is public information anyway, having been submitted to deep.
Yeah.
Not a problem.
Yeah.
And I think, the, the boardwalk is the last, I think, pretty much, one of the issues is that a connection from the street through the site to the continuous walkway along the, the water, and making sure that actually, it connects to the, the walkways that are on both sides. If they're not on both sides, at least whatever, you know, setting up a connection, so actually, if one side isn't there yet, it's ready to accept it when it does show up.
Well, we have, we have at eighty-eight South Water Street, right on that, right on the property boundary.
To the south, right?
Very nice, to the south, right, at, at boardwalk, so we surely don't need another one right next to it. Very lovely boardwalk, as I'm sure you know. So, you're saying, put another access on the north side of this property?
Right, so as, as we would see this.
We have the land area to do it.
Right, as we would see this, in any WB zone, Cosco is a very good example. You're creating some kind of a walkway in the back against the water.
Yes.
Just be cognizant of, actually, it's going to be a continuous walkway someday from the old street bridge all the way down.
Yeah, you're looking at it as a terminus at this point, kind of like a domino thing going.
Okay, and then from the street, because I actually knew the WB zones has new regulation to the effect of actually creating pathways from the street to the boardwalk, so you can actually walk through.
No, I understand that. Client would also, just to interject, or I forget, you wanted me to mention it, and I think it is important. They're also looking to create a small marina there, and working with the professionals, so that there would actually be boating from this side.
That would be fantastic.
In addition to the, in addition to the boardwalk.
It would be great to have some, I mean, we've changed the regs so that we could do residential to have a water-based use. Thank you very much for that, that was there. So, the, some sort of water access, some kind of view corridor. First and foremost, talk to Deep.
Yeah.
You know, maybe whatever solution they can buy into it. Okay, Madam Jenkins, Mr. Low, Mr. Wells, comments?
And I think the only thing I had Nick already raised about making sure there's some kind of vista from the right of way of the street, so that people do know there's water right there. And I just, I can't visualize what's available from the street view.
Right, right now, that's the case. Trying to balance everything out, but here we are saying, let's see how creative we can get. Hopefully, again, Deep, Deep will appreciate various factors here, and come up with a solution with us, working with us, that is one that everyone's comfortable with across the board.
And Mr. Levy, Mr. Levy has a comment. Peter, you'll need to unmute.
Okay.
Okay, hi.
Hi.
Hi, Ben.
I just wanted to reiterate some of the, just the attention to the, the site planning of this. Nick has mentioned a lot of these points, so, but addressing the street is very important, and, and creating a walled environment is probably not the best option for the, for the neighborhood. So, creating a nice procession that, that makes people understand where the entrance is, creating a facade along the street that, that addresses the street, and is welcoming things that create part of, that knit, knit to, keep the neighborhood knitted together, just conceptually are gonna be, are gonna make this project work and be appreciated, so that, that's all I wanted to say.
Great, thank you very much.
Appreciate it, thank you.
All right, next is Mr. Wells.
Yeah, I did have a question. Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'm just looking at page twenty-five of, of your rendering, and I just had a question, you know, of the, let's say, the upstairs parking area, there're walls all around it, is that to keep the water out, or is that like retaining walls? I just, I don't understand.
Yeah, those are just retain, yeah, those are retaining walls, essentially building that, the concept was to build the area up, there's nothing underneath them. So, it was, you know, you try to serve all the masters, now you got, we tried to show how we're gonna address the various issues graphically, as I, and as I said, these aren't, these are really blocking blocks at this stage, and so it doesn't look very aesthetically pleasing. But we have to see what are the, what are the priorities, what you were thinking, appreciate all your constructive comments. Tell you want to work with us, obviously, for the neighborhood, we do too, and we'll circle back to you, hopefully, after we can come up with a beating of the minds with Mr. Goucher.
Okay, Mr. Mack, Mr. Mackry?
Just one real quick thing, I think maybe something to keep in mind, if you move forward, is understanding the nature of the building as it relates to the Byram neighborhood, it's been there, part of the history of Byram. When looking at your construction and your design ideas,
Yes.
keeping an eye on what's there now, you know, the masonry building with the punched openings, those kind of things, it's, we have a lot of factory-type buildings on the water side of, of the Byram River there. One of the things I remember, actually, getting back to what you had said before, Mr. Tessie, the other building down the street, we had talked about, actually, a kind of a factory feel, kind of monolithic brick materials, those kind of things, as if it was a rehabbed building. So, if we're looking at the new building, and it kind of emulates a rehabbed building, rehabbed factory, or storage house, or warehouse, that's something we'd seen before.
Thank you. Well, some other iterations for the client, in terms of uses, at the end of the day, to make, make sense, did involve the potential to keep that facade, but I think at the end of the day, it doesn't work out.
Right, I understand that, but I think actually.
We're looking to replicate it.
Right, but before you tear it down.
I had your thoughts, yeah.
Yeah. Take a good, hard look at it and see what you could do about, what would my new building look like if I actually built it like this, and then go from there?
Or just wait and see, let's get the public comment. I, I think it's really important, one of the key things that Mr. Mackry said is that the community feel that it fits in, because you're doing something new, and I think we'll get some good input. Mr. Levy?
Yes, thank you. I, I just wanted to reiterate how it's important to get all of your program in, but now, obviously, you, you need to now design it, and things like putting a berm along the road, along the streetscape, is not a very friendly thing to do.
Exactly.
And, and, and building a structure which is virtually nondescript, because it's really just a warehouse for cars, is certainly not a great design idea. So, you can create some of the, I'm a bit of a broken record here, but you can create beautiful looking structures that look like buildings that house cars, and it could be part of your design. And it could be landscaped, and it can have every bit as much of the charm of whatever else you might build there. It doesn't have to be a warehouse, and it doesn't have to be an afterthought. And so, there's a lot to work with here, and I think that it's a great opportunity to design these things, and I, and I, I think you will get to these things, and we look forward to talking to you about them more.
And, and actually, before we turn to public comment, I would encourage you guys, after you've had the conversation with Deep, why don't you come back and talk to us for another pre-app? You don't have to submit anything, just ask, ask them to schedule you for a pre-app, and just come talk to us, without having, don't do any designs, don't do any work, just come say, look, we had those, that, that wall in the rear, and Deep said, "X-nay, so now we've gotta do this." So, just come and tell us where you are and how it's working out for you, and how you, how you're thinking about amending the building, so that you're not now wasting time on, on designs that, that don't work out, or that you run into problems down the road. Because I, I, my sense is, the neighborhood will be great. Because I, I, my sense is the neighborhood will be grateful if this is a beautiful project. And it works and it fits in. So let's try, I think that's what Nick was saying. Let's try to make this as a beautiful project. And with that, I'm going to turn quick to public comment. Uh, how many people from the public wish to speak? Okay. So far I only see Mr. Shahadi. So, Mr. Shahadi, I'm gonna, since he's the land use person.
One minute, Madam Chair.
Okay. So Mr. Shahadi, since you're representing the Byram, you and Mr., uh, you're representing the Byram Neighborhood Association. And then Mr. Pop also has his hand up, but I think we can let you guys talk a bit. And you did send in a letter. The commission has it, has feedback from you. Has input from you, but if you would go ahead and put it on the record.
Sure. Um, good evening, everybody. Um, Madam Chair and members of the commission. Um, do you know, I'm the Chair of the Land Use Committee for the Byram Neighborhood Association. We've had some extensive conversations about this property among the leadership. Today I'm speaking on behalf of the BNA. And I'm going to try and summarize the in comments that we sent this morning. Um, first I'll start with the positive. Um, always like to go there, the size, the height, the density, um, of this proposal are a major improvement over the twenty twenty-one self, uh, storage proposal. Um, and we want to acknowledge the developer for that, the owner, uh, and applaud those elements of, of the current proposal. As to the chair's question about design and what the committee, the community likes, I can only speak for myself because we haven't discussed this. Um, but I would echo what Nick said in the, uh, most of the Byram River waterfront on both sides has an industrial heritage. There's still a lot of industrial buildings. Some of the newer buildings along there, particularly part two, phase two of the eighty-eight South Water, um, mimic that. And I think that that would be a good design starting place for here. I don't think that the sort of Nantucket version of phase one really fits into the neighborhood.
Okay. So you think that the neighborhood would not want to see another Nantucket-y, that building that.
I, I, we will, we, in, when this comes back, we'll ask those questions. I'm speaking that particular part of it. I'm just speaking for myself.
Okay.
Um, uh, we haven't vetted that or talked about that.
Well, maybe you could, uh, what's the most efficient way, Patrick? Should Mr., should, if the BNA discusses it, should they send you the input or should, and you connect that, connect them with Mr. Tessie?
Discusses among the association or with the, Mr. Tessie, I'm sorry.
No, if, if, if there's something that the BNA would like to see, should they just send you the email or should they talk to Mr. Tessie?
I'm, I'm happy to be the, the go between there. I mean, it, it, we're sort of in the non-application phase. So record keeping wise, um, you know, it, 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 it doesn't really matter, but I'm happy to be the, that, uh, the go between.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm sure Mr. Wallace would want to be hands on to that.
Okay. Perfect. That would be great. So, um, why don't we just make sure that you guys get connected? I, I, if, if you've got a, an applicant who's eager to work with the neighborhood, that's fantastic. And maybe you guys can come to an agreement.
So in our note, we flagged, uh, a handful of concerns of the residential use in a flood zone, deep issue, uh, has already been discussed. We don't have anything to add to that. We really don't take a position on it, but know that it needs to be resolved before things can move forward. Um, the fill, um, is a real issue. Well, the size of the building is compatible with the area. The amount of fill is unprecedented. And I'll be blunt, it's unacceptable to the community. Everything from just a completely blocking off any access of view from the water, access to the water to what comes across, at least from the drawings, a fifteen foot cliff in the narrow walkway, um, that's along the waterfront. Uh, I, given that the developer of the phase two next door was a client of Mr. Tessie's, I'm sure he's able to make an introduction. Um, we'd encourage the owners to look at the open space, generous circulation, substantial dock facilities that the second phase of eighty-eight did. Uh, thought that was a really good event enhancement to the community where you get visual access, walking access, biking access, et cetera, uh, to the water.
Yeah. I think the big question, Mr. Shahadi is, again, it comes back to deep. How are they going to respond to a lot of fill, those retaining walls and the egress? And before they go, eh, they go any further with this, it would be good to get comfort because, uh,
Yes, it's.
Yeah.
It's perfect, it's perfectly fine. Appreciate Mr. Shahadi's comments. Okay. Just to make it clear, we only raise it just for everybody's own, we see, we looked at this as would people want us, people meaning whether it's deep, the community or, or, or the commission, would you want us to raise, raise parking on the site, uh, for the cars on the site to have a, a to go, a dry area. It's not a, we were trying to be proactive on the issue, see what the response was. Wh- where the concerns are, where you want us to see, which areas do you want us to focus in on? Lesser areas are not as important. So this is all very helpful to Mr. Wallace. Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay.
So, you know, continuing with the comments, the, um, WB requirements, uh, I'm sorry, I covered that. Uh, parking, um, uh, we questioned the extent of the parking. It really does fill the site up a lot. Uh, it's much more than what's needed by zoning and at least initially appears to be a driver of the fill. Um, and I think it would be helpful if that could be scaled back.
So something else for you guys to talk about at the BNA. Uh, we have significant concern on P and Z about all the development on the Portchester side. And that it's going to put pressure on Byram parking. Because there are so many buildings going up there and we're worried that people are going to start parking and walking. So in a way, you all need to weigh that. We obviously have the flexibility to reduce parking that's in excess of our regulations. But you all need to think about whether you want to, whether we want to risk more stress on the street parking.
Do, what I think would be helpful in that conversation would be to understand what the extra parking is being used.
Perfect.
How much of it would be accessed solely for the general public, getting access to the waterfront, um, um, amenities and how much might be actually for employees or other folks in Byram to relieve some of the parking congestion. So.
Or even just for the building. You're just, you're having three people over for dinner and you just don't have enough parking and there's nothing left on the street. Because all the Portchester people are parked there. This is a concern. You all have written us and said that there's more pressure on your parking as Portchester develops. So a building should at least have a little bit of slack maybe. So it's just something to think about. I'm not committing. I'm just saying both sides of the issue. Okay. Anything else, Mr. Shahadi?
The, the last major issue is the remediation that was discussed in part. Uh, deep now has an online portal. You'll go crazy trying to navigate it for a little bit. Um, but they have all of the documentation for the site is public access. Um, so the first part is just kudos to Mr. Wallace for really extensive, um, environmental investigation. The phase one was thorough. There was a lot of drilling questions that was asked earlier about sub slab, uh, drilling, testing, et cetera. That was all done. Um, the questions that probably are still open is there is nothing on file with deep to show that the remediation has been completed. And two, um, I'm not an expert in this area, but a good portion of the proposed remediation was to a commercial industrial standard and not to residential standard. So while you're talking to folks at deep, it's a different department than Mr. Goucher to really, um, uh, confirm, find out what's need to be done to clean it up to a residential standard. One of the things that you may be inadvertently communicating is when you look at the phase one, the majority of the ground contamination is on the north side of the property where the substantial fill is proposed. And I think it would be helpful to have the property clearly, the remediation clearly done. So there is not any inadvertent suspicion that, um, what that fill is doing is not raising parking, but covering, uh, incomplete remediation. So at this stage, you know, we appreciate the moves in the right direction. There's some real issues. Uh, we would encourage Mr. Wallace to reach out. Um, he's got my email. I've got his email. Uh, we'd be happy to talk.
Great.
Talk through these and find something that's common that, that works for the community and also works for the project.
Fantastic. And, and again, you know, you, y'all are welcome. Don't have to do any plans or designs. Just come talk to us. Won't even ask you about your, your numbers. All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Shahadi. Our next speaker is Alex Pop.
That, thank you. I am back again and I just want to echo a couple, um, concerns or things that I saw in the plans. Um, first of all, if you walk behind both, uh, complexes at eighty-eight South Water Street, you would see the spacious, uh, river walk. And this scene, this from the visuals, it just appears extremely tight and kind of out of character with what, um, the neighbor is trying to accomplish. So just more room for the river walk. Uh, cause it just, it, it appears tight and cramped. And also just the, the overall visual of the building. I understand that's not the, the final, but we, you know, the visual that we are using, that we had today, it just lacking charm. And it appears kind of on the cheap side. But, um, but we look forward to further conversations with the developer of this property.
Okay. I think that's a perfect wrap, actually. Okay. So I, is there anything you all wish to ask us? No. Okay. I'll take that as a no. So, um, uh, but please feel free to come back and talk anytime, especially once you've heard from Goucher, obviously.
You're talking to me. I said, you're talking to the neighbors. Well, it was a perfect rap, so I guess I'll keep my mouth shut.
So, um, Patrick's happy to, you know, I'm volunteering you, Patrick, but you know, let us know what you, what feedback you get and, uh, and how you want to move forward. You've heard all the key questions. Uh, with one big umbrella over it, which is can you move forward at all? And then if you did, what happens? Um, okay. And nothing further from the commission?
All good here.
Alrighty. Okay. All right. Thank you, gentlemen, and best of luck dealing with all those environmental issues. We will alert, um, um, the, the Director of Environmental Affairs. So they'll be on top of that, but I'm sure Mr. Wallace, you know what's ahead of you. Well, and hopefully the remediation's not too bad. Yes, Mr. LaRoe.
We have a last minute hand raise.
Okay. Oh, sorry. Hadn't seen that. Um, Mr. Alexander, go ahead. Mr. Alexander? Uh, you are unmuted, but we don't hear you. Mr. Alexander? Um, okay. I guess he's got a technical problem. Alrighty. Okay, I will. Okay. Um, so yeah, so I, I lost my train of thought in that, but, um, trying to get.
We're at, at a rap?
Yeah, we were at a rap. So come back, best of luck. And, um, you know, I think you heard make it pretty. Make it perfect. All right. Uh, but, um, we are very focused on the enormous potential that Byram has. And how it has to hold its identity right across the river from the, all the development in, in Portchester. But since Mr. Tessie grew up in Chickahominy, he's of great help to you, Mr. Wallace. Right? Chickahominy, Mr. Tessie?
Chickahominy.
So he can tell you about all the things that, that, that Byram, that are cool about Byram. Thank you both, gentlemen. We'll see you soon.
Do that. Have a good evening, everyone. Thank you.
Bye bye.
Talk to you tomorrow, Sean.
All right. So, um, our next step is the approval of the minutes. And we ran into a problem. Mr. Levy, are you here? Mr. Levy?
He's on mute.
Okay, you're here. Okay. Well, you went in and out. Okay. So we ran into a bit of a problem because uh, we can't do the eight five vote. Because attending that meeting, uh, we are missing yeski. And we, without Barilak, we only have three people. So somebody has to remember to give us back the eight five one again soon. Now for, okay.
Oh, you know where to go?
Okay, Mr. Levy, Mr. Levy? Mr. Levy? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Just, if you could just hang through, hang with me for just three short motions, four short motions, we'll let you go. Seated on the October twenty-five media, uh, minute vote, Albin, Mackry, Levy, Low and Wells.
Second.
Okay. I hereby approve that and it got seconded. The motion was seconded by Mr. Low. Seated on the November tenth minutes, Albin. Oh, I didn't take a vote. Um, do I, can I, do I have to do by roll call for the minutes?
No, just say aye to everybody.
Yeah, we can, we can say aye.
Aye, okay. Everybody in favor, say aye. Okay. Seated for the, uh, for the November tenth, Albin, Mackry, Levy, Low and Jenkins because Wells was out.
Yay.
Do I have, do I have, I move approval. Do I have a second? Mr. Low has seconded. Everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. And any, okay, Albin, uh, November twenty-second, I hereby move approval of the November twenty-second minutes. Seated on that, Albin, Mackry, Levy, Low and it's Wells's turn.
Second and aye.
Ever, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Seated on the December sixth minutes, Albin, Mackry, Levy, Low and Jenkins.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That is very difficult for your chair to do.
Well, you, you handled it very, very well.
But you do it so well. You do it better than any of us could have done.
I have to read it like three times and make sure I have it right. And then I'm like scratching my head. Okay. All right. Well, we're done, folks. And it's.
The old sixty song said, see you in September.
See you in Septe-, oh no, we're having a meeting next week.
Joking, everybody. She's joking.
Yeah.
What do you mean, we?
All right. See you in September.
Okay.
Bye.
Cheers, everybody.
Bye, everybody.